Good evening. We're calling to order the Tuesday, August 13th, meeting of the Planning Commission of Corder Madera. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner McKeef.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Ben Dell.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee. The record will show Commissioner Lee is absent this evening.
Thank you. At this time in every meeting, we open the meeting to comment from the public for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So, if you have something you wish to say, you have three minutes. You may stand up to the microphone and speak. I see no takers. So, we're going to say we're closing the public comment section of this meeting. Because we have nothing on consent, continued hearings, we will go right to new hearings. And our first order of business tonight is an accessory dwelling unit ordinance discussion titled "Review and Discussion of the Proposed Amendments to Corder Madera's Existing Accessory Dwelling Unit Regulations." Accessory dwelling units will be acronymed as ADU significantly in any discussion, if anyone asks what is an ADU. But Ms. Bactaglia is here to present a staff report.
Good evening. Chair Chase, members of the commission and public. This evening you'll be having a discussion on accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs. And staff is looking for feedback from the commission on preparation of an ordinance amendment. And the next step in the process will be for staff to return with a draft ordinance for formal recommendation to the town council. ADUs have been discussed at several Planning Commission and Town Council meetings in the last several years. And most recently, on May 14th, the Planning Commission had a discussion on accessory dwelling units and provided staff with some feedback and also had some questions. And so, we're here to present some additional information. The purpose of the accessory dwelling unit chapter is to comply with amendments made in 2016 to California Government Code Section 65852.2, which provides for local jurisdictions to set standards for the development of accessory dwelling units so as to increase the supply of smaller and affordable housing while ensuring that they remain compatible with the existing neighborhood. And in the last several years, the department has seen an increase in the amount of accessory dwelling units. And this is also important because it helps the town meet its fair share of regional housing. And just recently, the HCD released a press release that showed out of all California cities, only 16 were on target to meet the very low, low, moderate, and above moderate units. And Corder Madera has been able to stay on track largely because of the accessory dwelling This table shows the accessory dwelling units that have been approved or submitted since 2007. There are a total of 29. And what's not shown are the eight units that are part of the Preserve at Marin Project. As you can see, the types of ADUs vary from new detached structures to conversion of existing spaces. And the size also varies. The smallest is 304 square feet, and the largest is 1,195 square feet. And this map corresponds to the table. It shows the ADUs and where they're located in town. After several years of implementing the ordinance, staff has identified required changes and also opportunities to improve the existing ordinance. The changes are broken into three broad categories, which include changes to the existing policy to better reflect the town's ADU goals, changes to clarify existing regulations, and changes that are necessary to comply with current state law. I'll start with the changes to comply with state law. And these were discussed at the May 14th Planning Commission meeting. And the commission was generally in support of these changes. The first change is to create a separate process for ADUs that are within an existing structure. ADUs that are a new detached or attached ADU would follow the same process in the current ordinance, which includes a courtesy noticing and an ADU permit. However, if the ADU is within an existing structure, then they would submit straight for building permits. The next change is to modify the required parking from one parking space per bedroom to one parking space for the entire ADU regardless of the number of bedrooms. And lastly, staff is proposing to remove the existing standards that cannot be determined objectively, and in their place to add objective standards, including height, size, lighting, windows, landscaping, and parking. And staff is looking for feedback from the commission on the standard related to windows. The current language states that all windows facing a side yard adjoining a side yard of an adjacent property located within 20 feet of the shared property line between the adjoining side yards shall be clear story at a minimum of six and a half feet above the finished floor height. And this standard is to address privacy impacts to adjacent properties. Does the commission have any feedback on that standard?
At this time, I don't know that we'd be prepared to respond, but we will, yeah, later. Thank you.
Okay. The next set of changes are changes to clarify existing regulations. And the commission discussed these changes at the May 14th meeting, and we're generally in support of them. The ordinance adds several new definitions, including attached accessory dwelling unit, detached accessory dwelling unit, interior accessory dwelling unit, efficiency kitchen, existing structure, and public transit. There was a discussion about public transit at the May 14th meeting. And based on feedback received from the commission, staff has revised the ordinance to clarify that school bus routes are not included in the definition of public transit. And the public transit also defines that the distance will be a traversable distance, meaning the path one would walk or drive from the ADU to the closest bus stop. The third change is to define existing structures in the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district. And this change would require that an existing structure be in existence for five years before it can be turned to an accessory dwelling unit. And this is to address the scenario of someone doing an addition or accessory structure that does not include a kitchen, and then converting it later to an accessory dwelling unit. And there are currently limits on the number of ADUs that can exist on Christmas Tree Hill. And based on a comment received from the commission, staff did reach out to the Hill Dwellers Association to have a conversation about the proposed definition. And we learned that there's some transitioning occurring with the Hill Dwellers Association. And they're kind of morphing more into the Neighborhood Resource Group, and their focus is shifting. So, staff is also reaching out to the NRG as well to get feedback they may have on this definition. The next change requires that ADUs not be rented for less than 30 days, that that is recorded in a deed restriction. And the fifth change establishes a review of the record. It modifies the existing process to create a more functional process. And the administrative review would be done by the town manager, and that decision would be final. And the last change is consistency with prior approvals to make sure that an ADU does not conflict with a prior approval that was approved for a project. The next set of changes are to existing policy. And there are five, which include size, height, ADUs in a rear yard, lot coverage, and public transit as it relates to the location of ADU parking and replacement parking spaces. At the May 14th meeting, the commission had a discussion on the appropriate size of an accessory dwelling unit. And the commission, the base from, some people felt 700 square feet was an appropriate size, and others thought that 950 square feet was an appropriate size. There was also a discussion of doing a two-tier process, and that lots that were larger could have a larger accessory dwelling unit. So, staff's recommendation is to reduce the maximum by right detached ADU size on lots less than one acre to 950 square feet, to allow a detached ADU on lots less than one acre to exceed 950 square feet following approval of a design review by the Planning Commission. And the maximum size would be 1,200 square feet. Allow a 1,200 square foot by right accessory dwelling unit on lots that are equal to or greater than one acre. And reduce the maximum by right ADU size to 950 square feet. And the size of an attached ADU could also exceed 50 percent of the existing living area of the primary dwelling. And this is consistent with current state law. And this map shows the existing parcels in Corder Madera that are in between half an acre and one acre, and those that are greater than one acre. The ones that are shown in yellow are between a half acre and acre, and there are 114 of these parcels. And the red parcels are greater than an acre, and there are 78 of those. The next policy amendment is in regards to height. The current ordinance does not include a height limitation for ADUs, but rather, it's based on the underlying zoning district. So, in the R1 zoning district, the maximum height could be 30 feet. And I've included a diagram of how height is determined. The height of a structure is measured from a point on the base plane at the perimeter of the structure at finish grade to the point on the structure at the greatest vertical distance above it. So, to help with this discussion, I've included pictures of different accessory dwelling units throughout town. The first slide shows new detached structures. There have been two that have been approved. The first one was 12 feet, and the second one was 15 feet 6 inches. So, obviously, one of them is less than the proposed height standard that staff is recommending, 15 feet, and the other one is slightly above that standard. The original design, though, for the ADU at 45 Buena Vista Avenue was a flat roof, and they later modified the roof to match the existing roof pitch of the primary dwelling. This slide shows new detached structures above a garage. And for this type of structure, staff is recommending a 25-foot height limit. So, the two pictures shown, both do exceed the proposed standard. The one on the left is 30 feet, and it includes a garage. And then, in the middle is a storage area, and then the ADU is located above. And on the right, the height is 25 feet 6 inches, so just slightly taller than the proposed standard. These are two additional detached structures above a garage. Both are under the proposed height restriction of 25 feet. And this shows a new detached ADU that's located below a garage. And this type of ADU would exist on a downsloping lot. And in this case, the height is 18 and a half feet. These three pictures show the conversion of existing spaces to ADUs. The first one, the ADU at Sausalito, was a detached garage that was converted to an ADU. It has a height of 13 feet. The building on Redwood Avenue has a height of 12 feet 6 inches. And Oakdale Avenue was a garage that was converted, and that has a height of 12 feet. So, all of these are below the proposed standard of 15 feet. These pictures show existing space over a garage that was converted to accessory dwelling units. Both of these spaces were previously used as office-type space, and both are less than the proposed height standard of 25 feet for ADU above a garage. This is an ADU that staff is currently reviewing. It's currently a single-family home, one-story, and the applicant is proposing to locate the ADU above the garage. And the height of this is 22 feet. So, staff's recommendation is to reduce the building height for attached and detached ADUs to 15 feet, and to reduce the building height for attached and detached ADUs to 25 feet if it is located above an existing or proposed garage. The next policy amendment is in regards to ADUs within a required rear yard. Staff discussed this at the May 14th meeting. And at that meeting, we evaluated having a coverage of 30 percent, 40 percent, and 50 percent, and how the size of the ADU, how that would change based on those percentages. And based on feedback received from the commission, staff is recommending a maximum of 30 percent of the rear yard could be covered by an accessory dwelling unit. So, this table shows three different lots within Corder Madera, and it looks at what the existing rear yard area is. And again, that is the required setback times the length of the property. And then, the column on the far right shows how large that ADU could be and comprise 30 percent of that required rear yard area. An ADU could be slightly larger if it located a portion of it outside of the rear yard. So, this is showing the detached ADUs maintaining a 10-foot setback from the rear property line and the side property line, and the size of it is 450 square feet. But again, if it built out more this way, then it could be larger than 450 square feet. Staff's recommendation is to require a minimum 10-foot setback from the ADU to side and rear property lines, to allow a detached ADU and a portion of the required rear yard not to exceed 30 percent of the rear yard area, to limit ADUs located in the required rear yard to single-story structures with a maximum height of 15 feet, and to require clear-story windows on building elevations that face a side yard adjoining another side yard property. The next policy amendment is in regards to lot coverage. And this is something that was briefly discussed at the May 14th meeting, but we're interested in getting additional feedback on if this is something the commission would like to add to the ordinance. The R1 zoning district generally limits lot coverage to 40 percent. And lot coverage includes all structures that are greater than three feet in height. It includes the building, any garages, accessory structures, an ADU, or if there are decks or patios that are greater than three feet in height. The small lot sizes and the lot coverage requirements make it challenging to locate ADUs on many of these smaller R1 parcels. So, this table shows the same lots that were evaluated as part of locating an ADU in the required rear yard, and it shows the existing development on the lot and the existing lot coverage. So, the first lot shown is just over 6,000 square feet, and the lot coverage is 40 percent. So, this property would not be able to construct an ADU to do a new detached or attached ADU. The only options potentially would be to convert existing space or floor area was below the maximum. They could do an ADU over the existing garage, since that would not result in additional lot coverage. The third one down could do a detached accessory dwelling unit, but the size is fairly small, so it's likely that it wouldn't be financially feasible to construct it, given the high cost of construction. Now, staff is interested in the Planning Commission's feedback if lot coverage should be increased on smaller lots when an ADU is proposed. If the commission is interested in adding this to the ordinance, then we would like to hear if the increase should be a square footage exemption, such as 300 or 500 square feet, or if it should be an additional percentage of lot coverage, such as 3 percent or 5 percent. And for properties that are located in the floodplain, this is a similar approach. You can have a greater 2 percent exceedance of lot coverage for houses that have been raised out of the floodplain to account for patios and porches that are now over three feet. And lastly, we'd be interested on what size lot should be allowed to have an increase in lot coverage. At the May 14th meeting, there was a discussion about public transit and if the school bus routes should be included in the definition of public transit. And the commission felt that the school bus routes should not be included since their schedules are aligned with schools' start time and end times. So, the map on the left shows the public school bus routes being excluded. And then, on the right, it shows the inclusion of the public school bus stops. So, you can see when the school bus stops are excluded, essentially, all of the properties in eastern Corder Madera would need to provide a parking space for an accessory dwelling unit, because they would be farther than half a mile from a transit stop. So, because of this, staff is recommending that additional flexibility be included to allow the location of parking spaces to be located on a driveway in a front setback area. So, the current ordinance allows for a parking space to be located in the front setback between the driveway and the closest side property if the slope is less than 10 percent. And the picture, on the upper picture, shows that scenario. And staff is recommending that the ordinance be amended to allow, replace the parking space for the ADU to be located on the driveway in front of the garage, even if that is within the front setback. And the picture on the bottom shows that. The town's current ordinance requires that when a garage is converted to an ADU or demolished, that the parking spaces be replaced elsewhere on the site. And staff recommends including some additional flexibility on the location of those replacement parking spaces. Staff recommends allowing the parking on the front setback on the existing driveway, and also allowing the parking in the front setback between the driveway and the closest side of the property. And that's the same scenarios for the ADU spaces. At the May 14th meeting, there was a discussion on owner occupancy requirement, and several members of the public indicated that it would be helpful if this requirement was removed. And the owner occupancy requirement requires that a property owner reside in either the primary residence or in the accessory dwelling unit. And at this time, staff is not recommending removing the owner occupancy requirement. We will continue to follow state law, and there is legislation that proposes to remove owner occupancy. And if that change is approved, then we would return with an amendment in the future. And there are several bills pending in the legislature related to ADUs. Senate Bill 13 requires that an ordinance allow by right an 850-square-foot ADU and a 1,000-square-foot ADU if the unit contains more than one bedroom. It also prevents the owner occupancy requirement for either the primary unit or the ADU or the JADU. And it prevents a jurisdiction from requiring off-street replacement parking when a garage, carport, or covered parking is converted. An Assembly Bill 2890 would allow for the creation of both an ADU and a JADU on the same property. And staff is tracking these pieces of legislation and will incorporate any necessary changes based on the outcomes. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions and comments.
Very thorough report, Martha. Thank you.
And just, I just wanted to add, just for the public, there are copies of the staff report on the back table. There's also a sign-in sheet if anybody from the public wishes to be informed going forward of additional meetings regarding this topic. Please sign in, put your email down, and we will make sure that you're notified going forward of additional meetings regarding this subject.
Okay. And just for reiteration is that we're going to make recommendations to the council for this issue.
Yeah. And just on that, this is, again, just a discussion item tonight. There's no action. We're not requesting, and the commission is not taking any action. It's a discussion item for direction and policy direction, listening to public comment. And then, ultimately, yes, we will come back. In the process for an ordinance amendment is to have the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the town council, and the town council will ultimately make a vote on whether to adopt the ordinance or not, or modify the ordinance.
Okay. Very good. Martha, you have a long laundry list of items for us to review. But with that said, I'll start and see if the commissioners have any questions they want to ask her out of the gate. Phyllis.
I just want you to clarify something. Did you say that state law says that one of the properties, one of the units has to be owner-occupied?
Current state law does not. However, there's pending legislation that proposes to remove that requirement, that one of them be owner-occupied.
That cities may have, individual cities, but it's not state law, because I know that there's several cities up in Sonoma County that do not require it.
Correct. The city-by-city can decide if they want to include that requirement. In Marin County, San Onselmo does not require owner occupancy. Santa Rosa requires owner occupancy, but it can be waived if one of the units is made of an affordable unit. So, there are cities that have removed this on their own.
If you could have the time to work on putting together kind of a poll of what the cities, specifically in Marin, but I'd also like to see Sonoma, what their requirements may be, so we have an idea of what's going on in this area.
Related to owner occupancy?
Yes. Whether or not it's required. I think it would be good to know what is happening in the surrounding area.
Yeah. And so, the legislative session also will end probably, well, it does end September 12th. And it may not be an option for Corder Madera to even require that or not going forward. We'll wait and see on that.
But who knows what bills are going to be gutted and something else will be created.
Understood. There's a lot of, understood. A lot of changes.
You never know. They love that. Okay. Ken, I don't know if you want us just to ask questions or to kind of comment on some of this.
Let's just stick with questions for the moment, please.
Okay. Because I had things related to roofline and the windows.
We'll get to that, yes.
You asked about, I'd like to go into that afterwards.
So, does that...
Well, Martha asked our opinion. I think, do you want us to wait to give our opinion on those?
Yes, yes. I do, please. Thank you.
Bob?
Yes, I've got a lot of questions. I'd also like to hear from the public in regard to this. But one of the issues that you mentioned that did come up last time is a number of people were interested in ADUs but did not want the owner occupancy applied to it because they felt that would restrict the use of the property or restrict the value of the property. And I tried to sort of look on the Internet to see about the issue of that. And it seemed like the reducing owner occupancy would probably increase the value of the property, but having owner occupancy there would not decrease the value of the property from the standpoint of having a permitted ADU. Do you have any thoughts or understanding on the rationale for why individuals thought this would be detrimental to have owner occupancy attached to their ADU?
I can speculate that it is because people want flexibility, and circumstances may change, where maybe someone moves, relocates for a job, and if they could rent out both units, there would be additional flexibility for them to do so. I imagine members of the public probably will address that this evening, and they can indicate their reasons of why they would prefer not to have that requirement.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob, then. Margaret?
I have a question about the required parking. Right now, you're saying that there's one parking space where you're asking for a change from one parking space per bedroom to one parking space per unit.
Correct. So, regardless of the number of bedrooms, it would just be one parking space, and that is consistent with current state law.
Okay. And so, that, does that include or not include the main dwelling unit?
That does not include the main dwelling unit.
Okay. And I remember last time, there was some discussion about tandem parking, but I didn't see it here.
So, that is part of if parking spaces are to be allowed in the driveway in front of the garage.
Oh, okay.
If, you know, required ADU space was located there, it obviously would be in tandem with the required parking space for the garage.
So, if the garage were in use as the ADU, the idea would be to allow tandem parking in the driveway in front of it?
Correct.
Is that all, Margaret? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I have heard a couple of my questions be asked, and I'm certain that the public will ask some questions. So, with that said, I'm going to open this up to public comment on this section of tonight's agenda. So, we have a timer up here, and how many people would like to speak on this? Okay. So, a few. And I'm going to control this timer for three minutes. When you step up to the microphone, please identify yourself, and you have three minutes to say what you'd like to say. So, somebody started off. Stand up in front of the microphone, and let's get rolling. If there's any other people that can stand behind them and stand to stand, that would be great, so that we can just roll with it. So, anybody else want to get up there behind them? All right. Please, go ahead, sir.
Hi. My name is, is it my call? No? Testing, one, two. There we go. My name is Thomas Larson, 600 Oakdale Avenue. I'm here to speak against the owner occupancy requirement. To me, the purpose of the ADU ordinance is to create more housing supply, and this requirement severely limits housing supply by removing one housing unit from the market for every ADU. Right? Potentially, we could, let's say, we have one ADU and one principal residence. We could theoretically rent out both of them if, in an open market, rental market. But... But this requirement takes one of those units off the market. So that's the first thing. And secondly, I find the requirement is anti-business in the sense that building an ADU turns you into a landlord of sorts, and as such, you're a small business, and this requirement sort of restricts how you run that business, and also depresses the property value. So, and there's no such requirement for other types of multi-unit housing. So why do we have this requirement, is my question?
Thank you, Thomas. Next, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Michael Lark. Questions about the proposed reductions in height and size? In my experience, when those changes are requested or proposed, it's driven by some issues that have arisen, and I was curious if that's the case. I'm concerned in particular about a project that I'm working on in terms of being able to match roof pitch with existing structure, this is on an ADU above a garage, and still be within the reduced height requirement. That's, thanks, and my questions.
Okay, so your question is specifically related to your condition about being able to do something?
Well, just in general, what, why the proposed changes? I mean, if things are working well currently, or what the problem is behind it?
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Erland. I'm an owner of 525 Tamil Pious Drive, and I was here in the May meeting as well, expressing a similar sentiment. I am ankle-deep, working my way up to chest-deep in designs right now to build onto my house, and my intention was to put an ADU below. I live on the second floor of the house, and I'm building out the space down below just to support the home I'm expanding, to get a second bathroom in my home, and as a result, it makes perfect sense to put an ADU in there. I've spent 30 years buying houses here and there for myself. I was also a landlord a number of different times, and I personally have chosen to not buy a property that was owner occupied, because it limited my options. So I know you had the earlier question of why it is we believe that it reduces the value of a property. Well, anytime there's a market that loses some of the demand for a property, that's going to reduce its value. So if people don't want to buy it because it doesn't meet their needs, it's going to be less expensive than a property that does meet those needs, that can meet needs for several people. I signed up for the email last time, and so I heard about this, and I read some of the 165-page report, and it's a very detailed report, and it's got some great stuff in it. But I was very disappointed to see that, in addition to having the owner occupied stamp, we've now added an additional stamp, which is the less than 30 days, can't be rented for less than 30 days. I don't see these restrictions on any of the other properties around Corder Madera, if you have a single-family residence. It's not on the deed. It's a similar restriction, but why is it stamped onto the deed? I remain concerned that as I'm looking at spending an extra $300,000 to build an affordable housing for somebody who need, I'm a teacher myself. I know how hard it is to get these things, a place to live, local to your community, and able to do the things you need to do. And if I'm going to spend $300,000 to add on those extra square feet to make this, I don't feel I should be punished by putting a stamp on my deed that says that, in addition to owner occupied now, it also can't be rented for less than 30 days. I know that's a restriction within Corder Madera, but we're not stamping every other deed in Corder Madera either. So why is it being limited to these people who are putting in effort to address this need? It feels unfair to me. I see a lot of funny looks. Am I misstating something?
No, I think you're very clear. Thank you.
Okay. I'm also a little bit concerned about the windows thing. If you're 20 feet, this is the new recommendation, if you're within 20 feet of your side neighbors, and it must then be a 6.5-feet clear-story window, I'd rather that that was something if there was a restriction with respect to what's on the other side. Because if the house on the other side has 20 feet as well, or 19 feet on both sides, it seems like that's an excessive restriction to make the windows go high, so that you can't have windows looking out. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Jim Robinson, 25 Ash, Corder Madera. My wife and I have been a homeowner in Madera Gardens now for 22 years, and we've seen issues of second-story units and adding even to 1,100 total or square-foot homes being issues. And now fast-forwarding to an era where that, it's a lot of opportunities for development. I did not buy my home as an investment. I bought it because I wanted to live in the town of Corder Madera. I enjoy living in the town of Corder Madera. I am concerned about two potential changes, one mentioned that might be required by the state, although we're not always forced to follow those. We have a League of California Cities, we have opportunities to lobby against, for those issues that we feel are important to us. One of the commissioners mentioned that we should probably poll other cities and see what they're doing. I would suggest we poll some of the residents of the town of Corder Madera and see what their feelings are, as opposed to the few that show up at these meetings. I attended all the meetings that we had on junior second units. I expressed my concerns about eliminating parking available, being required as a result of that. What I find interesting over the last, what, two years, whatever, we haven't had one application for a junior second unit. I do have concerns about some of the proposed changes for parking for second units, and I respect the rights of property owners if they want and feel a need to have a second unit. I don't see that phenomenon occurring necessarily in Madera Gardens. Most people buying homes, there are young families, they're buying the homes to accommodate their families, and those of us like me, seniors, don't have an interest in developing a second unit or junior second unit. I think our survey of seniors, that was done a couple of years ago, sort of echoed that sentiment that prevails throughout the community. With respect to the owner occupied requirement, my concern is, I don't care if my home's worth a million dollars or $2 million. If I've got five cars parked in front of my house, and I have a lot of traffic being generated by additional units, that's a concern to me. I hate to see for those areas that were traditionally single-family residential properties becoming essentially multifamily residential areas that do not have owner occupied properties in the area. I would argue on both sides of that. I've seen some homes that are rented and not owner occupied, and they're maintained better than those who have to be occupied by owners. But I do feel that that's a particular concern that I would have. I hope that the town will look seriously at that, and it may or may not be an option for us. But I would hope that we'd recognize that there are those of us that are living in a single-family home in a single-family area, we'd like to continue to do that. We are concerned about parking issues, we're concerned about traffic. All you need to do is drive down Willow after this meeting late at night and see how both sides of the streets are filled with cars, and it essentially becomes a one-way street. And we're finding that in some areas, even in our own communities, where we've seen influx of second units that have impacted the traffic and the parking within the residential area. Appreciate your concern, appreciate your time spent, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Is that your timer?
Hi, I'm Dave Denning, and I live on 19 Mohawk. And I made a couple of comments. One is the comment that if you make an owner live in his unit, it takes the unit out of service. Well, you got to live somewhere anyway. So where are you living if you want both of your units to be rented out to somebody else? I don't know. I don't really care. But as far as owner occupied, I kind of prefer it just in that then I know who my neighbors are. And that also applies to the 30-day issue. We have an illegal Airbnb running across the street from us, and what we see is, and I don't blame the people, but, so somebody's renting an Airbnb, they're vacationing, they're in the city, they go to dinner, they drink, they party, they go to a show, they come home, it's 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning, they're feeling grand. And the one across the street from us, due to the direction of the people tending to drive, they park out in front of our house. And they laugh, and they talk, and they joke, and then they go across the street into the Airbnb. So for me, and one of the issues is, the point of a second unit is to provide affordable housing, not vacation rentals. So anyway, two comments. One is that I believe the 30-day is really vital, and my personal preference is owner occupied, just because then I know the neighbors. Okay? Thank you. Oh, she's wondering, is anybody going to enforce the 30-day regulation if it is in effect?
Thank you, Dave. We will address it.
That's a rhetorical question.
Yes, it is at the moment, but we will address, have the staff address that. Hi.
Hi, I'm Phil Simon for Simon Ranch Road in Corder Madera. As we all know, the state legislature has mandated and set forth requirements for ADU creation. Their intent was to promote ADU creation, and they set forth requirements that weren't arbitrary or burdensome. They allowed municipalities to come up with compatible requirements that would also not be arbitrary or burdensome. And now, within a period of a few years, we're looking at another set of requirements that may or may not be, if taken in a vacuum, arbitrary or burdensome. But to those of us who are involved in this creative process, the compound effects of time and changing requirements do seem particularly arbitrary and burdensome, especially in the face of the new state legislation likely to be implemented. The California chapter of the American Planning Association's position reflects their unhappiness that municipalities don't have the time to assess the impact of current requirements. I'm hopeful the commission will find a way to relieve these burdens and encourage staff to do the same. I am encouraged that staff has proposed a discretionary design review process for one specific type of situation that was mentioned in the initial presentation. Perhaps this can be expanded so as to encourage well-designed projects everywhere that surpass the expectations posed by prescriptive requirements that may be irrelevant for a specific site. It'd be a good thing to surround the process with some creative and positive energy. Aside from that, I have, because deed restrictions are an issue, deed restrictions can make obtaining a loan more difficult, and there's no good research that indicates negative impacts to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Phil. Who else? Okay, we have another comer.
Lucinda Smith, here in Corder Madera. When I attended the May 14 meeting, I had asked that there be some research done for the Hidden Valley, which is up here, Sassalito, Fairview, Pleasant, Madron, Alta Way, Alta Terrace. I didn't see any consideration in Martha's report, which I was disappointed in, but I would like to make sure that that is considered similarly to Christmas Tree Hill. It's nice that you give them some special consideration, but we also have the same kind of issues, and we have terrible traffic problems that are just very difficult to deal with. So if we had an emergency, we've got a real problem. That kind of goes into the additional, of having additional people because of the ADUs, and I'm appreciative of the affordable housing issue, and I like that it's helping us keep in consideration with state law. But it does add more people, more cars, and it's not well-regulated, from my perspective, that you allow one car, and then all of a sudden, there's two, and like the gentleman referred to, Willow Way. We end up with single-lane traffic on many of our streets up there. It's really very dangerous. With regard to the 30-day rental, I think it's vital that it be retained, having, and I'll go back also to the owner occupied, because that ensures that someone who lives in the area is going to take care of maintaining the area, and is going to enforce the people who are the renters to do likewise, and not let the property go in disrepair or not do the proper maintenance. It's not good for the neighborhood, it's not good for, in my opinion, the maintenance of the property, and it is something that needs to be retained in this new set of restrictions or regulations. We live in Corder Madera because we love Corder Madera. We didn't buy a house, like one of the gentlemen said, to be able to rent it out and make money. We bought our houses to live in them. So to require owner occupied, I don't think is unreasonable. If you want to expand the ability to rent and get some additional income, stay within the rules, the regulations, and I don't have a problem with it, other than the fact that it increases our population to where we might not be able to maintain it from a safety standpoint. Thank you.
Lucinda, I'd like to ask you a question, if I might, while you're up there. You said in your statement there that you wanted the same consideration for Hidden Valley that occurred on Christmas Tree Hill. I'm not sure what you're referring to, that you were for ADUs or some other limitation?
Well, if you allow, if you restrict what can be done up in Christmas Tree Hill, the same kind of a restriction should be applied to Hidden Valley. You've got the same problems with transportation and emergency situations, parking, you've got narrow streets, winding streets, one-way-out-type situations. You're not talking throughway, you're not talking multiple access points. It needs to be considered similarly to Christmas Tree Hill, in my opinion, just from a safety standpoint.
Okay. Thank you very much. Who else? Anyone else would like to speak to this issue tonight?
My name is Ted Benow. I'm an architect. I don't live in Corder Madera, but I do some work here, and my concern, just in what I heard, was about the requirement for clear-story windows. The concern I have is that you need egress windows for bedrooms, and also natural light is so important, that I agree with Mr. Erland, who spoke earlier, that maybe it can be more conditional or based on neighbors' conditions, distances, whether there's a fence in between or not. And so that just concerns me, to have a requirement that says all of the windows have to be high.
All right. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Ryan Wagner, and I live at 441 Manzanita. And I have a, just a small, unique scenario, but I would encourage the commission and the planning department to consider scenarios by which, if there is an existing structure in a rear yard, to allow to even extend that structure to within that 10-foot rear setback, potentially, you know, asking for opinions from neighbors or looking at life safety issues. But if it's something that a neighbor would be okay with, as long as the size and structure all is something that everybody else would be acceptable to, I would encourage you to consider allowing variances in unique scenarios.
All right. Thank you. Who else would like to stand up and say something about ADUs tonight? Anyone else? Okay. That said, that there's no one else standing up for commentary, we'll bring it back up here.
Peter?
Yeah?
Before we have our discussion, Adam, I'd like you to clarify something. Don't we have some kind of an ordinance that restricts rentals for less than 30 days? Didn't that go through the council, that some would have the Airbnbs, et cetera?
No, we've had discussions about it. We have a, we do have a permissive, we haven't, we don't have an explicit ordinance that's like some communities do regarding, you know, short-term rentals, as it's known. We do, by our permissive zoning ordinance, or by the principles of a permissive zoning ordinance, do say that those aren't permitted, explicitly permitted in our ordinance, short-term rentals, and therefore, they're not permitted, with something we're continuing to look at and study from time to time. And I'm familiar with the property that the speakers discussed and talked about, but we don't have, it's something that we'll likely come back and continue to discuss, as many communities are over time.
But they are not permitted?
Yes, they're not permitted. We do, if there are complaints, we will go and actively enforce those, but, you know, frankly, there's very limited number of complaints that we've received regarding those.
Complaints go to the planning department. Complaints go to the planning department?
Yeah, planning department, code enforcement official downstairs.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted that clarified.
Well, that was a good question to ask. There is a code enforcement official that didn't exist a few years ago, now there is. So, to my knowledge, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, okay. So Martha, I think that we heard some questions from the speakers, and I know you were assiduously taking notes. Would you like to address any of them, just outright? Or would you like me to?
There was, one was regarding the 30-day rental, and that provision in the ordinance is sort of why it was there. I think one of the speakers questioned, why have that? So, you know, that's been in our ordinance since 2016, when it was initially adopted, given the purposes of state law and the purpose of our own ordinance, and furthering sort of ADUs as a housing resource. I think staff and through the planning commission, the town council at that time, and sort of, we don't see a change in this feeling, thinks it's critical that because of so many sort of provisions that are relaxing otherwise applicable requirements for ADUs because of the reason to establish more housing, that this provision really reflects that goal and objective, in that you're not seeing less than 30-day rentals for an accessory unit, which may very well, at times, lend themselves to sort of this, you know, a short-term rental situation otherwise. And so, clearly, it's still able to be, we don't say anything more than that, so you want a two-month lease, a three-month lease, there are plenty of people who are traveling nurses or training, you know, contract jobs, that may, it may still serve that purpose, but I think that's, you know, still the feeling here that that's an important restriction to have. Currently, it's, I think maybe the other point, currently, it's not, it's a code requirement, it's not as a deed restriction in our municipal code, but we feel that it's important to notify not only existing owners, but those who may buy the property, that this is a real, serious restriction that the town seeks to make sure that there's compliance with.
So with that said, is it looked at as a single-entity discussion? When I say entity, I'm referring to a deed restriction or just a rule or a law that the town can enforce? So 30 days or owner occupied, that rides with the property, owner occupied, and it's proposed that way, right?
Those are two different things. I was specifically talking about the 30-day rental provision. As a deed, the provision in this ordinance that is changing from 2016 is just requiring it that it be in the deed restriction that is filed with the county. We frankly have been requesting that that be done anyways, as a practice, but we want to codify that, make sure that that's a requirement.
Right. Otherwise, there's no way of...
Well, it's still, I mean, it still would be enforced the same way that I was just describing, sort of, it would still be a violation of the ADU code to be doing that, but we feel this is sort of belts and suspenders that actually provides additional clarification on that rule.
Let me ask this. What is it about Christmas Tree Hill that is more restrictive for the general audience, such that it would refer to, you know, another location in town possibly matching that, is Lucinda Smith?
It's their guidelines.
So, what?
It's their guidelines that became...
Right, and, you know, so specifically, it is related, well, to explain the rule, there are several zones, and I'm not sure exactly, 12 to 14 or something zones on Christmas Tree Hill, so that's divided into different areas, and with each area, there's a limitation on the number, excuse me, number of accessory dwelling units that are permitted in each zone. That's how it was set up, that now applies to attached or detached ADUs. That unit limitation can't apply to if you're converting an existing structure to an ADU. State law will not allow us to limit that. But the underlying, I think, premise behind that regulation was related to safety concerns, some perhaps parking, there's not a great, as far as we've found, not a perfect legislative history, but it's clear that there was, at the time of the community plan and the overlay district in the early 90s, when this was created, an emphasis on the fact that there was literally, and not just, you know, figuratively, but there was literally one way in and out on Redwood at the streetlight up there for all of those homes up there. So it was a density limitation that capped the number of essentially units or accessory dwelling units that could be located up on Christmas Tree Hill. And in order to do that, we went through this in 2016 and 17, when we brought the update to the ADU ordinance before the planning commission and the town council, there are a series of findings that need to be made with evidence showing that sort of the exclusion of this area, or that, in this case, the limitation of ADUs in this area was based on specific safety concerns and whatnot, so, and that's, by state law requires that you do that.
Just to add to that, if you recall, Christmas Tree Hill is an overlay district already in the town code. And so it had, when the ADU language was adopted by the state, the town already had that overlay district, it already had the zones and the requirements. And the ADU language from the state is, in order to make exceptions to an area, you have to make specific findings on safety, public safety issues. And so, for Christmas Tree Hill, given the fire issues and the areas for travel and roadway and things like that, and the way that it was already an existing overlay district, the studies had been done to allow the town council to make the specific findings. For any other area in the community, it would be necessary to undergo substantial or significant studies to have that kind of a groundwork and factual evidence to support a finding for exceptions like Christmas Tree Hill. So we didn't just, the town staff didn't just willy-nilly, just kind of go through and just do it for Christmas Tree Hill. It had the existing substantial evidence already as part of the town records, part of the overlay district, to support those kinds of findings. It could be done in other areas of the community, but it would be a significant time and cost involved in doing those studies, to be able to come up with the evidence sufficient to make those findings.
Understood. And so, for the record, then what would initiate that process? Is that initiated from planning or from the town manager and public works?
Probably from the town council. I think we would seek direction, that that was a direction that, so it could, through this process, if that was something the commission wanted to recommend to the town council, that that be done, even if it's not included in the draft ordinance, that could be something else that, you know, the commission would want to pass on, that this is a recommendation that should be done. That would be one avenue to do it, but also, you know, it could be initiated directly from the town council as well.
I hope that addresses the issue to some extent for tonight. The, there's a number of speakers that commented about the window clear-story issue, and I think a little bit of clarity on this, as to the purpose of that in the ordinance, and just why and wherefore, and what does it do for both parties, neighbors and the ADU builders?
So the purpose of a standard related to window placement is to address concerns to privacy. One of the proposed changes is to allow accessory dwelling units within a required rear yard setback. So you could end up with a situation where you have an ADU in a rear yard that's located, you know, 10 feet from a side yard property. So if there is an adjacent residence that also has windows on that elevation facing the side yard, there could be privacy impacts. So that was kind of the, the reason behind the standard was to address potential privacy concerns. We did have a conversation about, does it make sense to allow exceptions to that? For instance, could you have a kitchen window or a bathroom window? So the commission has feedback on that issue, we'd love to hear it.
Right, and other conditions as well. I think some of the public mentioned there could be conditions under which it may not be necessary to do clear story in certain circumstances. The challenge we have is actually, it's got to be a black-and-white decision to be objective, so there's not a lot of criteria or subjective criteria that can say, oh, this, you know, when we look at, this one doesn't look to be impactful to the neighbor, it sort of has to be, is it, does it meet this condition or not, in very objective language. But that said, it could be, obviously, there's ways to address whether or not there's another property or another building opposite that side yard. I think, really, this comes from a lot of examples, we've seen design review in houses time and time again, where we have this concern between neighbors and a side property line. So we're, you know, based on that experience, here we are without that opportunity to weigh in on that through a design review process, wanted to see if there was a way to sort of address that, but not be overly burdensome. And so it would just be, it's meant to be really on that side, only on the side.
Facing the side.
Yeah, so only on the one building facade, essentially, facing the side yard, which I think we've seen, you know, it's not all, yeah, clearly, I know from the, from, heard from the architect, it is a limitation, and it is going to require, you know, it would require sort of a layout that means that your bedroom egress is through another window somewhere else, and the kitchen, you know, what have you. If you want light in your kitchen, maybe you have to have it facing the, you know, the corner of the, it would require, obviously, some significant changes for layout, freedom of layout, but nonetheless, that's the goal, and so there may be some feedback that you want to provide, um, helping tweak that.
For the sake of clarity, it's an issue that cuts both ways. It provides privacy to the neighbor, and it provides privacy to the occupant, and then the idea is it provides light to the new ADU. That's...
That's been the solution that I think ultimately the commission has come to on a number of houses where this has been an issue, you know, through the design review process.
Phyllis?
It sounds like a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. Why should an ADU be treated any differently than the primary residence? I mean, we have two, we can have two primary residences, we have it all the time, where neighbors are concerned about privacy. Why should there be something that the ADU is going to be treated differently than a primary residence? I think you have to look at it, is it necessary to have a clear-story window? Not that you will have it, and I think that's what staff does as you look at things. When applications come in, you see whether or not there's a problem.
Right, in this case, so a couple of things. In this case, we don't have any discretion, so we can't look at things and see if there's a problem. And then I think on the other, in a sense, staff, we've tried to take some cues from actually the ultimate recommendations and decisions that the planning commission has made, when you do have two houses, primary houses together, where we've changed, or the commission has recommended changes, or decided to change sort of larger windows to just clear story on the side facade.
Well, without finding where it is here, because I've already written in changes for two other ones, you can figure out the wording, rather than have it be, I know you want black and white, but to say that if there's a privacy issue, clear story, a possible privacy issue, clear-story windows would be used, I mean, to just say you're automatically going to do it, I think is creating a burden on an ADU that doesn't exist for a primary residence.
Okay, no, and I think that's a good comment, but I would just clarify that with that comment, we would just remove that requirement at all, or any reference to, so...
I would, as long as we're on windows, there's another comment I would like to make as regards windows.
Hang on, we'll finish that. So I want to say then that what that would mean is that somebody could wall in ADU and not be asked or demanded to provide a light window for that particular ADU, or how is that, how does that function when taking this out of the equation?
Well, there, it depends on what's on the other side of the wall, but if there was no required windows or lights by the building code, no, you wouldn't have to provide a, any windows on that side of the building.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
To further my concern about windows, that in looking at some of the examples you gave, I think it would be more important to say that the style of windows should be similar to the primary residence, you know, from the design, I think, you know, if it's over a garage, or, you know, over the first story of a house, there should be some nexus of the two, and not an entirely differing design. And once again, I'll leave it to you to put in the wording, I'm tired of it.
The challenge with that is it's creating a subjective design standard, and the, one of the goals of the ordinance amendment is to remove all subjectivity from the ordinance, so it's more of a black-and-white standards that you're reviewing when you're ensuring consistency with the ordinance.
Well, you say that they are consistent with the existing windows, style of windows.
Yeah.
The word, and we have certain language in our existing ordinance that consistent, even, you know, what does match mean, exactly match everything? That's the language we need to actually remove from ordinance, because it creates problems in compliance with the state law, not only, but also for staff, appeal processes, or introduces subjectivity into a decision-making process that isn't supposed to have subjectivity.
I would hope, and I admit that one of my primary issues is design, that's my background, that even with all the restrictions from the state, we make every effort we can to have attractive neighborhoods, attractive areas, attractive homes, and there's no reason, granted, everybody has different opinions, and yes, it is subjective, but I think an effort should be made for some kind of consistency within neighborhoods, and if I may, one of your slides that you showed, an addition, when you showed finished ones, you had an addition to, I think it may have been the first one, where you showed some examples, it was attached, no, go next one, it was on the back of a house, another, that one, upper right-hand corner. I am, what?
It's a conversion of an existing space.
Yes, and it would have, and in this case, it is, the roof line should have been more consistent with the original roof line, rather than a flat roof like that. I mean, we need some pride in our neighborhoods, and we have to...
That, in fact, it, conversion of an existing space is a, because there's, it's actually a building permit, there's not even any planning review or any planning entitlement involved with that, so it's strictly a building permit, and it can be, you know, obviously, it was improved with windows, and some money was put into improving it, but we have no option to weigh in on the, anything about the design on that.
It's an existing structure, existing space.
I know, and it's...
It gets permitted...
I disagree with the idea that we want to have good...
We can't...
This is why, you know, for the past two years, I've been working on design guidelines, where we take a look at something where there is a cohesiveness in, in both commercial and residential properties, because I think it's important that we try to do something, no matter what Weiner wants at the state level, I think we have to make an issue of our community and having pride in it.
Agreed. We've had some lengthy discussions about what the state is asking us to do.
Well, that's why I wanted Mike McGuire to come down and talk to us, and he is willing, by the way.
Okay. I'm going to say that I've asked questions, unless Martha wants to address anything else that was out of the commenters, and then I would then go on to, I'll come back to you, And then I would then go on to, I'll come back to you, Phyllis. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask?
Yeah, just in regard to some of the comments Mr. Simon brought up, he has a unique piece of property, sort of in the same way that the Preserve had a unique piece of property and we crafted a special situation for them so that we would have some ADUs and, you know, increase the affordable housing stock. And I would think that with that type of property, this would be something we would also try to work with him if he had some proposals to craft a special situation. His is very unique. I'm not sure if there are any other properties in Corder Madera that are unique like that. But we're, I think we're here primarily to work with the standard, single-family home and a request for an ADU.
Okay, anything else, Bob, that you want to add to all of this or question you want to ask of staff at this moment, more importantly? After hearing comments, do you have anything else you want to ask of staff?
No questions.
Okay. Margaret, do you have anything you would like to ask of staff at this point?
Well, right at the very beginning, which I had confidence in until I just heard Adam speak, it says that the stated purpose of the town's ADU provision is da-da-da-da-da-da, ensuring that they remain compatible with the existing neighborhood. So what exactly, are you paying just lip service to that and then everything else just goes according to the black and white rule? Or are you really looking at what's compatible with the neighborhoods?
Yeah, if I may, I, I think we're trying to hold true to that to the extent possible under the.
What's the extent possible?
Means black and white, objective standards. So that's height, that's size, that's not design, it's, I mean, you could try to get it designed by windows, but those are, that's what, you know, you could see the struggle with the windows, which is trying to address sort of the compatibility between neighboring properties and privacy and whatnot. Design, you could say, I mean, we could put in a restrictive, prescriptive rule that would say the pitch of the roof has to match the pitch of the roof of the primary house, for example. So at least you would get that if that's something the commission would, so there would be no ability to vary from that though, not one, you know, you couldn't change the pitch. So that's the, or we create a rule that has, within a certain limitation, I would guess, you know, can vary it by some degree, you know, so you could do those sorts of things. But that's the limitation. You can't, can't have a subjective judgment on what is compatible or not depending on the specific context in which the ADU is built.
Well, do you think that there's a difference in, say, height and size and compatibility with lots that are flat as opposed to lots that are built on steep hillsides? Are those going to have the same black and white rules for flat lots as they are from steep hillside lots?
Yes, yes.
I don't think you can do that.
Okay.
Well, explain how the state law restricts the ability to do this. So, and that's what his reference and what we, we looked at in the previous hearings was about what the state law says we can establish as a design guideline.
Well, no, I, and that's what I've, yeah, I've tried to explain. So I mean, I think, I think each, just because something is on a hillside versus a flat lot doesn't mean that somebody couldn't build a compat, with, under the same rules couldn't build something that's compatible in each situation, right? So for example, the pictures I think that Martha showed, those are in varying conditions. You may argue whether they're compatible or not, but the one on the right is very similar in paint and, you know.
Oh, okay, I'm not, that wasn't quite what I meant.
All right. What do you mean by that?
I was saying that looking at, you're, you're looking for black and white and I understand that. And are you saying that the black and white rules for height and windows and all those kinds of things are the same for an ADU that's put on a flat lot as opposed to the, the ADU that's put on a hillside? In other words, if you are standing on the street of a hillside and you're looking up, that height is going to be different than, than something in Madera Gardens where everything is flat?
Yes, that's true, but the primary house in that circumstance is also going to be up. So it's, it's compatible with the existing context in that situation to have such as the structure on the right, which is a detached garage, also is going to be as high as the primary house. I think, I think.
Let me ask you this. I think there is a section that says that a on-the-ground house is a different height allowance than a second story.
Well, yes, so here, oh, on, I'm sorry, that's, that was, thank you for pointing this. I did want to point out, this is the measurement. How you measure height is always from the finished grade at the perimeter of the building itself. So you can see it slopes up depending on, you know, if you're below at the bottom of the hill on the diagram on, on the left, thirty, thirty-foot height limit is going to appear much higher. That roof line is going to be much higher than thirty feet above the street, right? But that same requirement could go for the accessory dwelling you'd on the hillside and it would be very similar to what the primary house was built at. So I, I do understand that there may be different sort of, different ways of designing houses on hillsides than in flat lots. One of the things that we are concerned about is if we put in too many rules and be too prescriptive, we're going to actually, all of a sudden, you turn the dial too much and then you actually disallow or make it hard to be compatible in certain circumstances with actually the context in which you find some of these structures. And so you have to be careful not to be, because architects and designers want, you know, if, again, if they are focused on the good design principles and whatnot, they need the flex, you know, sometimes they may need the flexibility, which if we make too many rules and regulations and be too prescriptive, it may, it may actually work against the compatible sort of standard that we want to set.
But however, Adam, as I, I think it's about a year and a half or two years ago that Peter and I brought to your attention and we wrote emails, not talking about ADUs, but talking about primary residences, if the height should be different, if the plane was so X amount of feet, we never determined exactly above street level and we've never followed through. And I think, I wish we would because primary residences are much larger, so their mass is far more imposing if you've got a high hill and then you've got your thirty feet on top of it. And I think it's something, if you could make a note that, I realize this has to be, all this has to be taken care of now, but it's something that we definitely have to get into and look at in the future because as people are building homes, we should take a look. I mean, we've asked people who have homes that go downhill, like the one on the left, to actually lower the street level amount on some of them on downhill. I forget which house it was. But now we have some of them that go uphill from street level and we should try to do something about that. Just keep it in mind if you'd make a note for us to do something about this in the near, as near future as possible.
So there are the two heights in your recommendation for attached and above a level. So there is, that would be a concrete standard that would be established for two different types of structures. Okay. Margaret, anything else that you want to ask?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. All right. So that said, back to you, Phyllis.
Okay, I had two changes in the wording of the ordinances that I shared with Martha and Adam, and I'd like to share it with the rest of you now. It would be eighteen thirty-one zero-two-oh, which is the public transit and the bus stops. You know, that's one of my favorite subjects or unfavorite. In, okay, it's the, what's the section, what did I say? Eighteen thirty-one oh-two-oh, on the page, it's the fourth paragraph down, public transit means location, et cetera. The last sentence reads, "Public transit does not include school," I'll read it as it's written and then how I want to change it. "Public transit does not include school bus stops or school bus routes provided by a school district for the exclusive use of students." I'd like to change it to read, "Public transit does not include school bus stops, comma, even if usage allowed for public during use by students, comma, or school bus routes provided by a school district for the exclusive use of students." And the reason I want that phrase added in is that Route one-seventeen, the one for Cove School, doesn't exist anymore. If the bus stops and there is room and I want to pay whatever the fare is, I can get on the bus. But of course, that bus only runs during the school year, during school hours, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's important to have that phrase and there's no confusion later on that, well, I was able to get on the bus, so, et cetera. Anyway, the other one has to do with taking some pressure from our town manager, and that would be eighteen point three-one-point-one-two-oh, which has to do with review of the record. And that would be if somebody appeals to, because it is administrative, it doesn't, it's not something we get involved in as a commission or the council gets involved. If they appeal, it goes to the town manager. And what, and that sentence starts, "Within ten calendar days, comma, the town manager shall conduct a review, et cetera, et cetera." And I want to add in, "Within ten calendar days, comma, the town manager, comma, or a person or persons appointed by the town manager, comma, shall conduct a review, et cetera." That gives Todd a little bit of leeway to get some help, to get some input in, so he, you know, answer any questions he may have. So those would be the two changes, which really just clarifies what is written, doesn't change it.
All right. Agreed. Thank you. Those are, we'll probably, we may visit that again as we go through this. Martha, you had so many slides and so many points of input throughout this report. Our staff report has essentially the four different areas and unless you had a way you'd like to go through it.
Yeah, I think the, we can start with windows and then work our way through.
We've got proposed changes to comply with state law. You've got changes to clarify existing regulations. You've got policy amendments. And finally, there are other issues. So.
Yeah, so the first section are changes to comply with state law. And staff was interested in seeking the commission's feedback on the windows. There have been some discussion about that.
Okay. So that said, we've heard comment on it and I think that this comes down to whether we would be in favor of it or we want to modify it, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I heard from Phyllis that she would like to not be in favor of that.
Of saying that the clear story windows are required. As I said, I think it should not be treated differently than a primary residence would be treated.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
As I understand the black and white nature of things, I would see this being left there for ministerial review to approve the process and not have to go to the planning commission. But in regard to windows and actually in regard to height, I would like to see some type of discretionary review if an applicant comes forward, has slightly greater height, is trying to create a loft, or has a situation where windows would be appropriate. And I don't know if that would come to the planning commission, but that's what I would like to see in relationship to height and windows.
So that's something similar to what was done with the size, whereas nine hundred fifty square foot would be allowed by right, but then if someone wanted up to twelve hundred on a smaller parcel, they could apply for a design review and it would be discretionary review before the commission.
Before the commission, not just staff?
Correct. Well, in that case, I mean, windows could be.
That's acceptable.
And I would support that as well. Margaret?
Given the importance I put on the right of privacy, I think that clear story windows should be there, but I can understand subject to discretionary review on a desired basis.
Okay. So there's enough consensus here that discretionary review somehow worded into that. And when you bring it back, then we can talk about, you'll have something for us to discuss that outlines what that discretionary review would be.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, the next set of changes were changes to clarify existing regulations. And the change that was made from the last meeting was the change to transit to, to exclude the public bus stops from the definition of transit. And then Phyllis had some additional language she wanted to include in that as well.
So she's provided that. And the other items that are in here, besides definitions themselves, are the thirty-day rental to review the record and consistency with prior approvals. So I'm going to look to my right and ask Phyllis on these things, how you feel about thirty-day rental deed restriction, review of the record and consistency with prior approvals.
I can go along with them.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
I don't know if this would be appropriate in regard to the kitchen that's being created in an ADU, but I could see individual homeowner thinking that they were going to live in the ADU and rent out the bigger house. And in a situation like that, they might want to go to the expense of putting in a two-twenty line or a gas line if gas lines are still allowed in the state of California as we go forward with our carbon footprint. But I would like to see, you know, flexibility on, on that if the homeowner preferred to do that.
To install a, a gas line into the, the ADU?
Are you saying, Bob, it's about having the homeowner occupy the ADU?
Yes.
And that is allowed under.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but the requirement was that there was only supposed to be one-twenty, you know, so you couldn't have a washer dryer.
And that's only for a junior accessory dwelling unit and that definition is, is consistent with state law. But if it's a regular accessory dwelling unit, there's no limitations on, on the.
Oh, I, I misread that then. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Margaret?
I am in favor of the deed restriction.
Okay. And the, the review of the record and the consistency with prior approvals that occurs in what she's proposing?
Yes.
Okay. I am as well. So next section then.
Okay, so the next question is in regards to size, size. And what staff is recommending is a two-tiered process. So if you have a parcel that's less, less than an acre, then you could have a by right ADU of up to nine hundred and fifty square feet. There would also be an option to apply for a discretionary design review permit. And you, with that option, you could have an ADU up to twelve hundred square feet. And then for larger parcels that are over an acre in size, you could have a by right twelve hundred square foot ADU.
Okay. So that is more permissive than just cut dry? So personally, I'm in favor of that.
I am.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, I would support that also. The, the one concern that I had was on the small lots, the detached ADU would have to go potentially into the rear setback. And if it's a very small lot, it would seem that the logical thing to do would be to have an attached ADU so that you wouldn't have to go as far into the rear setback. But I'm not sure there's a way to clarify that or encourage that.
Before I ask Margaret, I forgot to ask, how many substandard lots are there in the town? Seventy-five hundred less?
There's quite a few.
We, we talked about that once and it's a pretty significant number. So, I mean, that does.
I can't remember exactly, I would be throwing out.
But in the older parts of town, there were several.
Somewhere around two thousand lots in town, is that right?
It's like twenty, yeah, I can't remember exactly how many it was. I, I want to say like more like a thousand to fifteen hundred, but I don't know. Maybe it's. Maybe it's fifteen hundred.
So most are going to fall into this need to address a formula for creating possibility...
Well, yeah, and that's another...
That's a different one, right. Okay.
We'll get to that in a second.
I, I have a real concern about the smaller lots and the idea that it's by right, nine hundred fifty square feet, especially given the idea of the compatibility with the neighborhood goal. And also with the idea that a lot of those lots are oddly shaped. There are pie-shaped lots, there are circular lots, there are lots with little appendages sticking out, as far as I could see. And I think that that idea of by right is a problem for me.
Well, that's a problem. We have to make it... We have a microphone problem somewhere.
Peter Woodman?
Yeah, go ahead.
When we speak of the right, and I am concerned, you know, it's more about the compatibility, that the setbacks, the rear setback, the side setbacks, the lot coverage, all of those would address the concern you're bringing up. Because if, and that would, you know, just, yes, lots are odd shaped. I mean, this is not how Washington DC was laid out very neatly and stuff. And as I say, I think the setbacks and lot coverage would take care of it.
Martha, and forgive me for not finding it right off, you had a chart that describes this issue relatively well.
You had it on your slides, too.
The, the, so there is a, a list provided of all other Marin County cities.
The, the list I'm thinking of was a...
Of all this?
A lot size and how you arrive at the percentage, right? There.
I wish these, if we could have these pages numbered and reports, it would help.
So this shows four different lots that were evaluated in Madera Gardens and Mariner Cove. And this is looking at, looking more at the rear yard setback area and what an allowable ADU size could be if a portion of that could be located in the, the rear yard area.
So then comparing this with by right makes a significant...
Yeah, so this is four hundred and fifty square feet is the size of this, abiding by the, the ten-foot side and rear yard setback. And this right here is the, the edge of the, the existing house. So there is, I would say probably about thirty feet between the edge of...
Darkness.
The edge of the...
I think that's the name of the book.
The edge of darkness.
The edge of the, this is the setback line, the rear yard setback line. So, you know, there's some distance here, so the ADU could comprise a portion of the yard.
Yeah, I think, and I think one thing to be really clear on here, this is specifically saying what square footage of the rear yard could be, can basically covered or be allowed to be an ADU. It's not saying what the maximum size of an ADU on this, these lots could actually be, because that's determined by overall floor area allowed on a lot, FAR. This doesn't speak to that. Because you could still build over, you could put it on the garage, you could, you know, et cetera, that wouldn't go into the rear yard or whatever.
So if, in this case, if, if you're given a nine hundred and fifty square foot by right, you know, then there has to be some discretionary to review to determine where and how that gets put into place.
And not every lot will be able to do a nine hundred and fifty square foot by right ADU, because they will need to meet setbacks, lot coverage, floor area ratio. So, you know, the smaller lots that are under seventy-five hundred square feet would, would not be able to, to fit an ADU of that size.
So does that answer your question, Margaret, as far as by right, that these other standards of development will cover the size of the ADU?
Well, it, it addresses the concern I have.
Yeah, okay.
Satisfies it, but it addresses it.
So there we have it, where the development standards cover the size and then, but there, they can start with nine fifty, but development standards will confine or regulate the size of the ADU. So that's essentially where we are. And then to go to the formula for getting over nine hundred and fifty square foot based on the lot size, that's the other size of this. Okay.
Lots that are an acre or greater, staff is recommending that a twelve hundred square foot ADU be allowed. And again, they would need to meet all the underlying development standards as far as setbacks and lot coverage.
All right. So then...
I object to that.
You object to that?
Yeah.
Okay. And...
I, I just think a twelve hundred foot home is, is not an ADU anymore. It's a home. It's another primary dwelling.
Even on a one acre lot?
No, it's a crowded dwelling, but I think it's, it's a, it's a residential dwelling. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath house.
So then that means that you don't see or propose allowing a formula to allow a larger lot to have a larger than nine hundred and fifty square foot ADU?
No, I guess I think that ADUs are less than twelve hundred square feet.
Okay. So we have three people that would say formula and one person who says no.
That's okay.
Right.
And state code, I think, says up to twelve hundred square feet. Because that's why we, because originally our, our ordinances, I think, were seven fifty. And we raised it to twelve hundred and we saw that that wasn't working, that's why we discussed it in May.
Okay.
Okay. So the next decision is the height. And staff's recommendation is fifteen feet for an attached or detached ADU and then twenty-five feet if it is located above a garage.
Design review?
So this would be...
It is a standard that...
Stand, it's, it would be a standard.
Right. But the, but I think the comment, Commissioner Bundy said that, you know, previously if they'd like to see design review to go above that.
Okay.
Instead of saying twenty-five feet if located above an existing or proposed garage, why isn't it from the, I'll use the word loosely, ceiling line of the garage, the fifteen feet?
Might be a very high garage.
This is an accumulative height that she's proposing to have on there. You know, and it achieves, if you did it above the garage, you might be over twenty-five feet, so...
Yeah, okay. I, I'm just concerned that we don't want to end up with the detached garage being higher than the primary residence itself because it's a one-story dwelling. I mean, there has to be some, as I say, nexus with some of this and it gets kind of iffy. I'll laugh for a technical term.
Well, I mean, you, I mean, that, that could be a rule. I mean, if, if we wanted to put in that you can only have an ADU above your garage, or I'm sorry, if this is what you're recommending and referring to, you can only have an ADU above your garage for if the existing structure already has two stories?
Well, the, there are a lot, in my neighborhood, which is one-story homes, there've been a number that have had two stories there. And there's a current proposal for an ADU over a garage on a single-story home. But, you know, the, the way it appears, it would be as a second story designed with the house. So I would not...
Just part of the house or...
It is, well, the one that we're talking about is part of the house.
So this is the proposal where it's an existing, single-story home. It has been raised out of the flood plain, so it's a little bit higher.
Yeah.
And then they're proposing to do an ADU above the garage. And the current height of the, the garage varies from about thirteen feet to eighteen feet at the peak.
But there wouldn't be any other second story proposal with this?
Correct. So it would just be accessory dwelling unit permit. So it would be evaluated based on the objective design standards and there would be no discretionary review.
So I'm fine with this as it is.
Okay. I can go along with it, just knowing what Bob's saying about his neighborhood.
Okay. Margaret?
I guess it's all right.
Okay. Martha, next issue then.
Okay, the next issue is if ADU should be allowed in the required rear yard setback. And staff's recommendation was to require a minimum ten-foot setback from the side and rear property lines to allow it not to exceed thirty percent of the required rear yard and to limit it to a single-story structure. And then to have the, the requirement for clear story windows on the side yard facing the adjacent side yard.
And it is conceivable that an applicant can make a request for a variance?
Correct, for the, the change to the, the windows.
Or setback?
Yeah, a variance is always a possible option. It's a discretionary option, obviously, but it is only, it's limited to, obviously, the variance findings and hardship and what have you, that somebody would want to make a finding specific to that.
But it's an opening, opening for applicant to make that.
Correct.
Okay. I personally find that these are good limitations. So Phyllis?
As I say, my only concern was treating the ADU, the fourth bullet, yeah, the fourth bullet, treating the windows differently than we would with the primary residence. Just wasn't quite comfortable with it. I mean, why should one be treated differently than the other? It's same distance, you know, same site.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
Again, I would want to see discretionary review for difference in the, in the windows that we've already talked about before. And, and also on these smaller lots that are going into the rear yard setback, we should really encourage the homeowner to do it as an attached ADU rather than detached. With the, I think the requirement was that you had to have a minimum of three feet between the, the structures. Well, you know, that's sort of crazy if, if somebody was going to do it that close. You might as well just save some money by having it attached.
Right. And I think actually if we wanted to, it would be more than encouraging, but you could ratchet down the thirty percent or even get rid of any provision which would actually force, you know, that would actually force the hand into a more of an attached configuration. It's just a balancing between the amount of flexibility, really, we want to provide homeowners to develop the type of ADU that they, they, they seek. And so that's, that's where we're trying to find the right balance there with, you know, some of this. But I understand, yeah, that's a...
Yeah, it was really trying to discourage getting into the rear yard setback if possible.
Okay. Margaret?
I agree with that.
Okay. We're there, more or less. So with the, the way it's written here, with the exception that Phyllis would like to see that not in there.
Okay.
Bob would like a discretionary review. I'm okay with either one.
Okay.
I mean, if there was a review, you know, I could go along, but I just didn't want it set in cement.
And the next thing for consideration is lot coverage and whether the maximum lot coverage should be exceeded if there is an accessory dwelling unit on the lot. And the, the questions are if, if the answer to that question is yes, should it be a square footage exemption up to a certain number or should an additional percentage of lot coverage be allowed?
Okay. This is a significant issue here, so it could be thorny. Phyllis?
I'm not really comfortable with increasing the lot coverage percentage.
Even in a formulaic manner?
Okay, would you go on to the next one? Now, this is where, when you talk about discretionary, you can really get yourself in trouble. There's certain things that should be absolutes and I think this is one of them, especially when you get into the smaller lots. And you talked about windows and privacy. What about choosing your yards and stuff? What about quiet, you know, you know, noise and stuff? I think, you know, if it's forty percent, it's forty percent.
Well, we created some formulas for substandard lots for FAR. So here we are with the ADU and we're asking, should we do the same thing? So if we have a formula for, as you ratchet down in lot size, do they, should they have a factor of being able to increase the FAR here? So...
Lot, lot coverage.
Lot coverage, right.
Okay. I mean, if you were going to do it, then I would go with two.
A percentage.
A percentage rather than a square foot amount. Because size and configuration of the lot would make it difficult. Do the percentage better off.
And we had used the seventy-five hundred square foot basis for other discussions about formulas. So is that what you feel this should be a standard two, seventy-five hundred square foot?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Like the number three.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
Forty percent.
And stick with it and not move.
And not move?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Bandell?
No percent.
No percent. Stick with forty. And that's where it lays. Okay. So I'm on Phyllis's end of it here in that there would be an escalator here for certain size lots.
Well, my preference was not to, but if you're going, so you're pushing, you know, but my preference is forty percent is forty percent, as I say, the absolute. But if you are, if there was an agreement of the others to have an increase, I said I would go with the percentage rather than the square foot amount.
All right.
But I think the forty percent is the way we should go.
That's where we're going to land.
Okay, got it.
Forty percent, okay.
Okay. And the next is the parking, the location of parking spaces for the ADU. Currently, the space is allowed in the area between the driveway and the closest side property line. And staff is recommending also allowing the ADU parking space in the driveway within the front setback.
It's a necessity, I think.
What?
I think it's a necessity.
Yes. I mean, I, I want to see the car off the street. And if this is the way to do it, this is the way to do it.
We can't seem to force people to not use their garages for workout rooms, so, you know, they're going to be... Margaret?
I, absolutely, the cars should be off the street.
Okay. So yes, the idea is that it can be allowed in an existing driveway or a driveway expansion. Now, that said, is this where we talk about the allocation of one-bedroom?
No, that was the, the first slide as part of change to be consistent with state law, that the maximum required parking space for the ADU would be one parking space.
Okay, got it. All right.
Oh, that isn't, is that already state law?
That is already state law.
And it, and it may shortly go to zero. We'll see.
And we wouldn't be able...
I think, I think in a place, I'm just going to throw this in, in a place or the neighborhoods that we've heard about, like Christmas Tree Hill and Hidden Valley, it's insane to, to allow parking on the street when you might have a fire truck that needs to get by at three o'clock in the morning. And I think it's, it, it really is part of that health and safety issue.
Well, yeah, and...
That's huge.
What they did in, in Christmas Tree Hill to address that very issue was to actually mark on the street where actually cars can be located and they can't be parked outside of those boxes. That's strictly enforced and it was...
Not on Sundays.
It was...
Always up there this Sunday.
It was, you know, it, those were drawn with the fire truck width and people walking up in the street to make sure that people weren't parking in locations where you couldn't get access. But I imagine something similar actually would be if we wanted to apply that... But I imagine something similar actually would be, if we wanted to apply that to other neighborhoods, you'd do something similar as well.
Could that be done without wasting a lot of time and money on a study? If it seems obvious that you want to cordon off areas for parking?
No, and I think we should, if you really want to, you canvass the neighborhoods as well, because I imagine there are people who might have different opinions about ADUs and prohibiting them and whatnot.
Beyond ADUs, state law, are you saying that state law keeps you, a town, from saying there's no parking on this side of the street? Or there's no parking, that you can park in this area and not that area? And you don't need to do a big study and hire consultants and take a lot of time, which keeps us from ever getting anything done? We're not Congress.
You mean just parking regulate? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You could do parking regulations, but I imagine Public Works Department would want to carefully study. As we've seen, putting red curb even on Meadows Suite for certain stretch took.
But Peter went ahead and did it without hiring consultants and making a big deal out of it. He went in and, yeah, he got some feedback that he didn't like, but it happened within the right time, as I say.
Absolutely, it's all basic.
We'll leave it to Congress to get nothing done and we're going to get stuff done.
Okay, all right.
Okay. The next change is.
All right, just a sec, Bob wants to make a commentary.
Just in regard to parking, the tandem parking, that would apply to the homeowner that had two cars in that family, so that the ADU and the homeowner aren't trying to tandem park.
So potentially, the owner of the AD, or the renter of the ADU could be parking behind the driveway, which could be where the owner is parking their vehicle. So if that was a situation where there was tandem parking, they would have to coordinate amongst themselves to move the cars.
Okay. The other thing that's in there is allowing lifts. And I can't imagine somebody putting a mechanical lift in their front driveway unless they really wanted to piss off their neighbor. But, you know, these things are very appropriate for enclosed spaces, but, you know, that's not clarified in the ordinance.
And that is from this current state code to require parking spaces in any configuration using lifts or other means. So we have matched.
Another winner accomplishment.
The state language. We've never had a question about a mechanical lift, though, for parking. And I would imagine if the current parking is relaxed to allow parking in a front setback, most likely that would not be an issue.
So I have a question.
And if it is, it's going to be something that's done administratively and not.
Margaret, yes, go ahead.
Just, just tandem parking, if they're tandem parking, you can't overhang the street or the sidewalk, can you?
No, the space would need to be on the property.
It has to be on the property.
Yes. So in generally driveways are 18 to 20 feet in length.
Cars are getting so big that it might be an issue.
Okay, so the next question was if the location of replacement parking spaces should be allowed to occur within the front setback on the driveway or within, in the area between the driveway and the closest side property. This is what, similar to the parking for the ADUs. This would be the replacement parking spaces if a garage is converted to an ADU.
It's fine.
Margaret? Okay, she says, I guess so. And I'm, okay, yes.
I hate to take away garage, garages, because cars belong in them.
Right.
And then lastly, I think we already went over the owner occupancy requirement.
Yes, on all fronts. Bob?
Could you give us a definition of owner occupied? Can this be an immediate family member such as grandparents, siblings, son, daughter?
Occupying the primary house, you mean?
Yes.
Are you going to go to the code definition currently?
Yes, so there is a definition of owner occupancy. So essentially, it's 51 percent. You need to own 51 percent to be considered owner occupant.
So on the deed, on the deed to the property.
But Bob's question was, you know, let's say a husband and wife own this and a grown, instead of them living within one of the units, a grown child lives in that unit. That's, am I correct? Is what you're asking a relationship to the owner of record, how's that?
Well, the current definition does not permit that, but if you want to.
That would be, I think, my thought, that we could loosen it up so that the immediate family members would be considered representatives of the owner to be in one or the other of units, either the ADU or the regular unit.
Yeah, right, and I think the way we've seen this handled is actually just make that statement somewhere else in terms of an allowance that would actually be permitted under sort of like extended family rule or something like that. You could do that. We don't, we sort of, this is one, and I think it's really somewhat premature to go too far down the road in this. Just, this is one of the hot-button things that's been debated in the legislation now. So we may just want to wait and see where it plays out. In a month, we'll know really where we are. But I understand the point you're trying to make. It'd be, if the other commissioners want to weigh in on that, that might be helpful just to understand the perspective on how far beyond the owner, as on the title, you want to go in considering that.
So I'm just going to mirror Adam's prior comments. Again, it has to be an objective standard that the staff can apply. And state law already in certain case law, case laws have interpreted family to be much broader than how the commission might be interpreting family. Doesn't have to be a blood relation, it's just, I mean, and so again, it may be very challenging to come up with the description, a definition that is objective. I mean, we're not going to be able to require people to supply proof or evidence of the relationship. I mean, if somebody treats somebody as an immediate family member, that's not certainly going to be, it would be challenging to enforce. But I think Adam's point is well taken, is that the legislature is, all the versions that we've seen of proposed legislation does away with the discretion to even allow this condition. So if it still survives any legislative session or, we can take a look at possible language to come back, but it may not be as what, quite the way that you're envisioning it.
Okay. Okay, Phyllis?
I mean, somebody owns the property, they live in a house, they build an ADU, and then they move out, and as I say, a grown son or daughter moves in, you're not going to know. What are you going to do, go around once a month to check to see who's living in the place? I mean, nobody.
All right, so.
You have to use some common sense.
We'll just leave it as is until the state legislature decides something in our behalf. Okay. And then.
That's it.
All right. You need anything else from us on this issue?
I don't think so. So next steps will be that we'll return with a draft ordinance for consideration based on comments received this evening. And it would be considered and then making a formal recommendation to the town council.
And you're going to add in the language I gave you?
Yes.
Yes, and it will likely happen after we have a better, you know, it doesn't make sense to come back before the state legislation is known, at which time we would incorporate whatever we need to do to be compliant with that.
All right, thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute break and then we'll be back here. So thank you guys for being patient and thank you for all your input tonight. Appreciate it. Continue the public hearing tonight for the study session of 155 Summit Drive. So this is a preliminary review of proposed design review and variance application for the demolition of an existing two-story residence and construction of a three-story residence at 155 Summit Drive. Martha, this is yours to present.
Good evening, Chair Chase, commissioners, and members of the public. This evening, the commission will be providing the applicant with preliminary feedback on the proposed three-story residence at 155 Summit Drive. No formal action is required by the planning commission, as this is a study session. And the commission may want to provide comments such as policy, planning, and design to the applicant to help them as they move forward in the process. The project site is located at 155 Summit Drive. It is accessed from Lower Summit Fire Road. And there are two adjacent neighbors to this property. Located to the north is 151 Summit Drive, and there is an existing residence on this property. Located to the west is 159 Summit Drive, and this residence is located across Lower Summit Fire Road, and it sits at a much higher elevation than the project site. Located to the south is open space, and to the east is an undeveloped landlocked parcel that is owned by the same individual that owns 145 Summit located two houses down. The project site has slopes in an easterly direction, and Marin Maps lists the slope at 51 percent. And this is an aerial photo that shows 155 Summit, and you can see it in relation to the fire road and the adjacent open space. The property is zoned R1A, and it is surrounded by other parcels that also have that same zoning designation. The R1A parcels are shown in yellow on the map, and this here is 155 Summit. And you can see it is surrounded by other parcels that are similarly sized. The minimum parcel size for R1A is 20,000 square feet, and many of these parcels do fall below that minimum parcel size. And then the property shown in the orange color are also in the Christmas Tree Hill Overley District. And these parcels are zoned R1, which have a low, higher lot coverage requirements, and also setbacks are reduced compared to the R1A property. These pictures show the existing site condition. There is an existing two-story residence that is, was constructed in 1931 and is 921 square feet. There's also a deck off of the rear of the house, and there is a stone retaining wall as well with landscaped area. And as part of the project, the applicant is proposing to demolish the house and the various improvements on the site. There currently is not any onsite parking spaces. This house was developed before the zoning ordinance was adopted, which includes the current parking standards. And as part of the project, the applicant is proposing onsite parking spaces. The house is essentially the last property before you reach the open space. You can see this is the gate to the open space area. And then this here is the entrance to 155 Summit. And then across Lower Summit Fire Road, that is where 159 Summit is located. And again, they are at a higher elevation. And as part of the project, the applicant is proposing to remove five trees from the site. The majority of trees located on the lower portion of the site will remain. The project site is zoned R1A, and this table shows what the ordinance requirements are for that zoning designation and then what the applicant's proposal is. The minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, and the lot size of this property is just under 8,600 square feet. The front yard setback is flexible since it's located within Christmas Tree Hill, and the applicant is proposing a nine-foot, 10-inch setback. The rear setback is 35 feet, and a 35-feet, 6-inch setback is proposed. The north side setback and the south side setback both vary. And the setback requirement for R1A is 10 feet. However, since the property has slopes of greater than 10 percent and a height greater than 12 feet, the increased side yard setback applies. And I'll provide some more information on that in the subsequent slide. The applicant is proposing a 10-foot setback on the north side, which requires a variance. And they're proposing a 6-foot setback on the south side, which also requires a variance. The lot coverage is 25 percent, and the applicant is proposing 33.6 percent, which also will require a variance. And the applicant is meeting the floor area ratio of 40 percent and the structure height of 30 feet. The parking requirement is two parking spaces, one of which must be covered. And the applicant is proposing a total of five parking spaces, two within a garage and three on a parking apron. And three of those five parking spaces can be individually accessed. The front yard setback, the Christmas Tree Hill allows for flexible determination of setbacks. And this applies where the property lines abut an existing roadway. Setbacks for yards shall be flexible and shall be determined through the design review process based on specific site characteristics such as slope stability, retention of existing vegetation, minimization of disruption of the site and surrounding area, privacy, view, and sunlight for the subject parcel and neighboring parcels, maintenance of existing neighborhood character and scale, roadway line of sight, and visual and or physical intrusion on the roadway. It is very common in Christmas Tree Hill to have structures that are located within close proximity of the front setback, both on upsloping and downsloping lots. And the applicant is proposing a nine-foot, 10-inch setback to the entrance of the home. And then the garage is set further back, and the 22-foot setback is proposed to the garage. The increased side yard setback applies to this property since it has slopes of greater than 10 percent and since the height above, the height of the structure is greater than 12 feet. So the typical setback for an R1A parcel is 10 feet. And then for every, then a foot is added for every two feet above the, above 12 feet. So if you have a building that is 30 feet, the setback would be 19 feet. And the required side yard setback for the north elevation varies from 10 feet to 18 feet 6 inches. And the required side yard setback for the south elevation varies from 10 feet to 19, 19 feet, sorry. Okay, the applicant is proposing a three-story house that's just under 3,000 square feet. And then in addition, there's a 451-square-foot garage. And the house steps down the hillside. The design of the house is contemporary. And I will let the architect go into details on the design approach and the architecture proposed. The proposed floor plan includes an entrance area. There's a, in the first, the first floor, or the upper floor is 442 square feet. It has a future elevator, stairs, coat closet, and entrance. Also on the upper floor is the garage, which is right here, is 451 square feet. And then this is the proposed parking area, which will accommodate an additional three cars. The proposed middle floor is 1,313 square feet, and it is the living area of the house. It includes a guest bedroom and bath area in addition to the living room, dining room, kitchen. And there is also an outdoor patio proposed, which sits on top of the roof of the lower level. And the lower level is 1,222 square feet, and this is, includes the bedrooms. There is a master bedroom and bath, and then two children's bedrooms, a bathroom, and then linen closet, laundry room, et cetera. The project includes a request for three variances, which include a side yard setback variance on the north side to allow a 10-foot setback. And the required setback for this elevation varies from 10 feet to 18 feet 6 inches. A side yard setback on the south side is also being requested to allow a 6-foot setback. And the required setback for this elevation varies from 10 feet to 19 feet. And then a lot coverage variance is being requested to exceed the 25 percent coverage, and a total of 33.6 percent coverage is proposed. And the applicant has designed the house to be as far away as possible from the residents located to the north and has pushed the house closer to the southern property boundary since that abuts open space. And unusual circumstances that exist for this parcel are the steepness of the slope and then also it is an undersized lot. And I've included the design review findings and in addition the Christmas Tree Hill findings. These are attachments to your staff report and then also the variance findings. So when this project comes back to the commission as part of the review process, the commission will need to make the various findings in order to approve the project. And again, these are all attached as attachments to your, to your staff report. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Martha. Of the commissioners, Phyllis, do you have any questions?
Of the commissioners, Phyllis, do you have any questions for Martha?
Not at this time.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
I had a question about the undeveloped parcel owned by the resident 145. Is that parcel maintained at all from the standpoint of tree thinning, you know, fire wise landscaping, anything like that?
So it is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain, to maintain the parcel. I did speak with our fire marshal about that issue, and he indicated that it's more on a complaint basis, that they go out to properties and to verify if, if they are being maintained. When this, this project is developed, there would be a requirement that they maintain a minimum defensible space distance, and if, they may need to get an easement to do some clearing on that adjacent property.
Okay. And it, it is landlocked. Is there any possibility that that could get developed? Or what are the intentions of the owner at 145? Did they just acquire it to protect themselves?
I'm not, I do not know.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Margaret?
Where, at this point in the process, have the neighbors been notified or talked to?
So we did send a public notice to, to everyone within 500 feet of, of the project site to notify them of the study session this evening. And it's my understanding that the neighbor has had conversations, or the applicant has had conversations with the, the closest neighbor, and I'm sure they will address that in their presentation.
Okay. I don't have any questions. So who's going to make the presentation for the applicant?
More difficult than I expected. It's a bad, or you just, come on, I can't.
Where's your scouting?
Oh. There you go. That should work. Hello, hello, nice.
Where's Phil? Let me get up.
Testing. Testing. One, two, three, four.
Testing. Okay.
Thank you.
Success. Okay. Good evening. My name's Ted Beno. I'm with OXB Studio Architects. Thank you for hearing the project at this early stage before design review. Martha presented a lot of stuff that is going to make me able to skip a lot of stuff, which is great. She went over the project site location. I did want to show you this sort of three-dimensional aerial view. One thing that I want to make sure that you're aware of, if you didn't have a chance to go visit the site, is really how remote this location is. We have the open space all here, and then the next house below is way down here. So this one neighbor here is very close, and that is the one close neighbor. This neighbor across the street is elevated much above the project site. You actually have to turn onto this smaller access road off of Summit. So again, you, you wouldn't even know that this property was there unless you go all the way to the end of that road. On the left side here, you can see 151 Summit, and across the street up the hill is 159. And then here we are looking down the access road with the open space beyond, and this fence is actually the frontage of the subject property as it currently exists. The wall on the right-hand side is a retaining wall, and up until just recently, as of June 10th, well, actually before June 10th, Yaron, the owner, had two deeded parking spaces along that wall there, which the town has prohibited use of because of access to the fire road. So right now, the, the site has no parking whatsoever. These views are from the open space looking back outwards. You can see the house on the subject property, and then 151 Summit in the background. And here we are again from the open space looking up towards the uphill neighbor, and you can get a good idea of how much further up it is and how much vegetation is in between the two properties. All you can see right now again is this fence, so that's, that's what the frontage of the property looks like as it exists. And then from on the property, looking downwards, you can see just, all you can see is trees. So no concerns about neighbors or privacy there. I just wanted to kind of go over real quickly the Christmas Tree Hill goals and design guidelines that we considered when we were designing the project. One of them is compensate for severely limited off-street parking. We're going from zero to five. One is to avoid severe fire hazard. We're demolishing a wood tinderbox on the site right now. New construction will be steel-framed and wooie-compliant exterior materials. Drainage, we don't have any plans for that yet, but as we get into design review, we'll have a civil engineer, and we'll store water or dissipate water onsite. Retention of single-family residential character, there's no ADU proposed. Preservation of natural topography and location of building on least environmentally damaging portion of the site. So the new building footprint overlaps the previous house and the previously disturbed portion of the site, and there is really no grading proposed outside of the footprint of the house. Minimize, minimize impact on surrounding properties. You can see from what I showed you earlier, there are no houses other than 151 Summit nearby or impacted by this project. 151 Summit's primary windows face east, so away from the subject property. And the proposed house that we designed has no windows or balconies facing 151. Also, I wanted to point out that there is actually a 6-foot easement on my client's property, which allows for a non-conforming condition of the house at 151 Summit, which is built directly on the property line. The, the design shall be in harmony with the cottage character of Christmas Tree Hill. So driving through the neighborhood, you, I, you see quite a large variation of styles of houses. And I've just snapped a shot of some other contemporary houses that you see as you're on the way up to this property. This one, which is under construction. This one, which is actually further up the hill. And then I just want to touch on the building forms. So per that design guideline, which talks about the cottage character of the neighborhood, the question is, is how do you define cottage character? Our solution was to design a modern cottage, a building that is proportionally appropriate with articulated building forms, breaking up masses into smaller, smaller sections that step down with the, with the topography. We have the benefit of a downsloping lot, so unlike what you see on upsloping lots, all you see from, from the public view is a one-story structure, and we have designed deep recesses, which achieves shadow lines, and we have varied materials, which also helps break up the massing. Then, looking at the side view here, the building forms step down with the slope. That was a very important design consideration. Recesses and overhangs again create articulation, shadow relief, and sort of a lighter-on-the-land feel, other than these big basement things, spaces that you see that come all the way down to the ground. Again, you see some varying materials on different building forms, and then this is the side that faces the closest neighbor, where you can see that we've avoided windows entirely on every face except for some of these ones that are down lower, below, and overhanging feature. The site plan, as Martha stated, we pushed it as far as possible away from the neighbor at 151 Summit. There is a 6-foot trail easement, so that was, that was our limit. That's why we're, we're proposing a 6-foot side setback on that side. On the site plan, again, you see the added parking, two in the garage, three outside the garage. And we actually need the driveway apron for maneuverability too, so that cars can back out and not have to back all the way out the fire road. Then again, you see articulated building forms, so these are different roof forms stepping down the hill. I wanted to show you the site section, just to talk again about how the building terraces, the floors terrace with the hillside. This follows design guidelines. It limits building heights. You see the 30-foot height limit. It articulates building forms, lowers perception of mass, and it allows for cavities underneath, which we're actually utilizing for, to place spoils and limit off-haul. Limiting off-haul is actually the primary purpose for the lower terrace that we have designed below the house. Please note also that filling in the cavities limits the heights of all the crawl spaces to less than five feet, so that they are not counted in the floor area ratio. I'm going to skip the floor plans because Martha went over that well, and then just quickly talk about code compliance and variances requested. We are in compliance with the floor area ratio, the front setback, and the rear setback, and the building height. The hardship that we're facing with this property is, is mainly the zoning versus the size of the lot. The zoning is based on a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. We're, you know, 8,580. This lot and others in the immediate vicinity are much more typical of what you'd see in an R1 zoning district. So variances requested include lot coverage, and I just want to make sure to point out to you that the house footprint itself is actually, actually meets the coverage, but it's when we look at the parking apron and the lower filled terrace that it pushes it over that limit. I also want to point out that if this property were in R1, it would meet the 35% maximum requirement, and obviously, if the lot were as required 20,000 square feet, we would be allowed up to 5,000. So we are, you know, well under that number. Side setbacks, Martha explained why they are increased. So I just want to point out that, again, if it were in R1, we would comply because only six feet would be required. If the lot was 20,000 square feet, it would be really easy to, to design this structure without requesting a variance. And then I also just want to point out that we have a combined 27 and 1/2-foot required setback. On a lot of this width leaves us with less than 16, or less than 17 feet to build. So it's very, very restrictive. That concludes what I want to talk about. Yaron Palfi, the owner, is going to come up and just briefly touch on the neighbor outreach that he has done.
Thank you very much, Ted.
Hi. My name is Yaron Palfi. My wife and I own the property at 155 here, and I just wrote your date here. Basically, I reached out, the property, as Ted mentioned, is somewhat to the side. So we have Mr. Amos right next door, then we have 159, and that's about it. So as far as outreach, I, I met with this neighbor here at 159, Rob, 8-5, and briefly I, I updated him. I updated him that the new location about the construction, about the, our, our intent to build, and the fact that the new house will be, the main change will be that the parking will be onsite, and his only concern was the construction noise during the construction, and we intend to fully comply with the town's requirements under the permit, and that was not an issue. And that was it. He was excited, he had no issue with that. I met with Sean, the owner of 136. He doesn't, they don't have a view into the house at the same time they're in, in close, they're close to the house. They have no issue with that. He has no issue with that as well. His only concern was during the construction, and obviously, we will comply with the town's requirements during the construction. No issue there. I met with Christian, the owner of 145, and the lot right back here. That was in early May, and he, he was happy that the lot is getting developed. He lived there for a while, and at some point, he, he did not want to see the drawings or take a look at it. He said that he would look into it just out of curiosity, but at this point, he's happy that we're moving forward. As long as we don't approach, we don't go into his lot, he's good with that. And then I met with my next-door neighbors, Craig, who's here, and, and Bob. I met with them four times, twice in May and twice in July. So the original design was, again, to push the house as far to the, towards the open space and down, and we reviewed the plans with them, and they requested to see an outline of their house, to show where the house is in proximity. And I met with them again in May, and I showed that to them, and they were okay with that. And then early June, we had a little bit of parking situation, parking changes onsite, and which, we shifted the, the design completely essentially, and we had a new design now that brings the parking onsite. So I met with them again on July 11th with the new plans, showing everything, going over everything with them. I left the plans with them, and I asked for their feedback. It took a few days. We met again on July 17th, and the only comment, and we reviewed everything again, and the only comment that they wanted to clarify was one dimension, that it was scaled incorrectly or was shown to be five feet in their mind, and it was actually 10 feet. And with that, that concluded our meeting. I believe that there is no other issues at this point. I believe that there is no other issues at this point. And that's it as far as neighbor outreach. I did not hear from any neighbor, no, this is not a good idea. If anything, everybody's happy that they use different descriptions for the house, but that we're going to replace the house with something new for property values and everything else, and the parking, obviously. So, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that I'll ask the other commissioners if they have any questions for either you or the architect. Phyllis.
I'm just looking at the Christmas Tree Hill Design Guidelines. And how it fits into these guidelines, I don't know. The roof forms, it says flat roofs are discouraged. You know, there's so many things. And the group that used from Christmas Tree Hill that has gone over this in the past seems to have disbanded for just your advantage at this point. Because we have heard about it, and I'm just wondering, I mean, it's, it's not a cottage. But there's several up there that are not cottages. I would only be concerned that it does seem a lot of mass. I would like to see some of the ceiling heights reduced. Just so it wouldn't be such a mass on the side. It's a beautiful design. It's in an area that, you know, it's kind of away from things. You know, it's not like in the middle of a lot of things going on. I like the idea the cars are off the fire road, especially in this time, we're so worried. And having had a bunch of cars at my house when my kids were growing up, you know, I know how they can add up. As I say, I'm just concerned about the mass itself, if it could not look, I mean, even the top floor, the entranceway, it's a 12-foot ceiling for a foyer. I mean, I just, go down two feet and still look good.
All right, so you're saying that you're questioning the massing of?
The massing of it. As I say, you know, there's no way you consider it a cottage, but there is no definition of cottage anymore. If there ever was one, I think everybody has their own version.
Okay. All right, but no questions for this gentleman?
No, as I say, it just doesn't seem to fit into the things that are written under what they call Exhibit A here.
Right. Okay. Bob.
I was curious about the easements that are sort of, I guess, at the corner of the point of the lot. Are these just sewer easements or these old trails? And are they maintained at all? You know, these wider lines that converge on the point there?
There's a plan that shows that, there, whoop, there you go.
Let me go one more.
Are you referring to these?
No, no, on the, on that, the one that was up there before. The overview that was up there of all the properties surrounding it.
This one? Or was it one of Martha's?
The very last one I was asking.
Oh, okay. I'll get back to that.
There you go.
These coming down here, sometimes those can represent designated trails. And sometimes they're sewer easements. I just wondered if you knew what those were.
I know that this is a trail easement. And these ones, I don't know for sure, but I might assume the same. Yeah.
Historically, those have been pathway easements that don't really exist. Somehow, they don't exist, even though they're shown on the maps.
Yeah, it's not maintained. There's space there, but it's just a steep hillside. There's no stairs or anything like that.
Okay. No, I think in this day and age, having a, you know, house that has some fire resistance to it is a much better idea than, you know, what we all would like to see up there is a craftsman-style cottage with shingles on the side, but we're not building any of those anymore up there. So, I think it's, I think it's a nice design for the site. And while there is, I think, as Phyllis said, there's some mass associated with it, but because of the location and because of the site, it's not viewed by anybody. And it looks like a very livable house that you've designed.
Okay. Margaret.
I just wonder if the neighbor is going to speak?
Yes, we'll offer him that moment.
And then the other, the question I have just is this, you're using natural wood decking and siding? And so, how would that be fire resistant?
We have used certain fire-treated products that are actually WUWE-approved, that are natural. Well, they're actually engineered products, but the top layer is a real layer of cedar. So, it appears on the surface like natural wood, and it has fire-resistant qualities.
So, it's, I was up there this weekend, and so I, I was more concerned than I've ever been before for the safety issues for driving and fire resistance. And anybody on those trails could throw a match onto the deck, and you'd be finished.
So, for these materials to be approved for use in WUWE, it means that they're tested? Yeah. It's a very big concern in that location.
Okay. And then the other thing was the removal of the trees, the trees that you're going to remove. How would that affect the stability of that hillside?
They, many of them are in the footprint of the structure, so that would be within the new foundation line. So, I don't think that-
So, you're putting a foundation over what gets cut?
Right. If we look at this section here, for example, I mean, anything that would, any tree that would be removed from one of these sections is then encompassed by foundation downhill. Margaret?
Another question.
Okay. Just a couple of questions regarding this. In one of the descriptions of your efforts regarding the site, it says, "We will look to the town for guidance on construction techniques and so forth." I highlighted it, and now I seem to have a hard time finding it. And here it is. "All slopes are planted or otherwise protected from erosion, including benching and terracing where appropriate. We have not developed a landscape plan as of yet. We will look to the town of Corder Madera for recommendation to achieve protection, protection from erosion without jeopardizing fire safety," et cetera, et cetera. So, the town has guidelines, but really, it's up to you guys to follow that and implement the right standards for that. So, the town says this is what it has to be, and when you say, "Look to the town,"
Yeah, I understand. So, we will have a landscape plan for the next round for design review. And I think I probably should have said, "I will look at the town's requirements." But we are, the careful thing to do is to coordinate privacy, screening, planting, and fire requirements.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a challenge.
Yeah.
So, the discussion about square footage and so forth. All those lots up there are, I did a tally of all the lots in the neighborhood right around there. So, throw out the high and the low. The largest one was, let's see, I guess it was 8,000 square feet. And the smallest one was 3,600 square, 3,600 square foot lot, if you can believe it, right? And the house on that is 1,000 square feet. But, so the average FAR up there is 23%. And the average square footage of the house up there in the immediate neighborhood is 1,622 square feet. So, and that was out of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lots in the vicinity there. Let's see, no, I had the average of, now I can't read my scroll, and it's truly scroll. But nonetheless, what you're asking for was a significant number here to get to FAR of 40%, that's maximum for the lot, 33% of the lot coverage. So, that's what I wrote here. 38.8% was the average lot coverage up there, and you were going for 33. FAR up there was 23%. So, that's a variance of a few percentage points. I would just like to ask the other commissioners if they're okay with that as a comparison to the neighborhood values up there. I'm sorry, what?
I think we're, she's trying to say, we're reading question modes, questions are-
Since it's not a decision, I'm sure, I think that if the commissioners want to add comments, rather than form a consensus.
I'm just asking what their opinion is of that. I agree.
So, could you repeat those numbers?
I'm sorry?
Repeat those.
Well, he's asking for 33%. The average is 30% up there, and the FAR is 23% up there. So, anyway, I'm just pointing it out as a point of bulk and size of the house on the lot. And it's big up there. And my thought is that it is the last house up there. No one will see it, but does set a precedent to some extent. So.
I didn't study other FARs in the area. You are including garage and unconditioned space when you do that.
I'm just going off of what is Zillow stated as.
Zillow, see, so, Zillow will not include garages. They won't include double-height spaces. They won't include unconditioned, or unconditioned spaces. So, the way that Corder Madera calculates its floor areas, the number looks large compared to other, especially like what Zillow will have. I'm correct, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
This shows the FAR at 40% is the urgent requirement.
Okay. So, with that said, I think the commissioners have said something initial out of the gate here. So, I would like this neighbor to get up and speak if he has something to say, which I believe he will.
Craig Amos, 151 Summit. Nothing further to add at this point. Just express gratitude to Yaron and the architect for meeting with us and answering the questions. Obviously, it's a significant structure, and it's a big change for us, but it'll be nice to have that done, gone. And I especially appreciate the removal of those trees. Because right now, we have a continuous fire canopy that we can't mitigate. So, I support it in that regard.
All right.
Thank you.
So, before you go, and we're in an unusual situation, you're the only public commenter here and so forth. There is a specific and stated absence of windows on that side of the house. And you've looked at the elevations of the house, and you're okay with what you're presented with?
Yes, we had demolished a structure and rebuilt in 1995. So, we have two windows that are on that side of the house. One of them is elevated in the main living space. Our kitchen window view is going to be looking right at the parking garage, but because it's set back across the parking apron, we won't see the structure as much, probably just see the cars on the parking apron, which isn't ideal, but, you know, given the factors, it's, you know, I don't see how it could be, really be mitigated more significantly, maybe with some landscaping. But, you know, we'll continue to engage in the process as that goes forward.
Okay. Any bells? Have any questions for this neighbor?
How long have you lived in your home?
Well, we moved into the original house in 1982 and then rebuilt in 1995.
And was this, the structure, was this house there in 1982?
It was. Our, our original house was one of the original houses on the hill, built 1908. The fire road was our driveway, which is, you know, we own it and have parking easements, which are all in dispute right now. But this was, a lot of theories. One of the things was, this was a carriage house for the original house where this was. Who knows? But it's, it's an interesting structure. It's got six-foot ceilings downstairs.
Oh, jeez.
It's, it probably needs to go away, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that input, yeah. All right. So, I see we're at 10 o'clock.
Yeah. Do we have to, is this one we have to decide to go?
Yes. So.
I would propose that we go forward another half hour.
Okay.
Second?
All right.
Only if Adam can turn the air conditioning off.
Oh, I was taking advantage of the fact that it's such a hot day.
So, we're good to go then?
Yes.
That's it. All right. We've heard from the neighbor, we've heard from the applicant. I'm going to come back to each of you and ask you how you would like to impart opinion at this point, any further than you already have. Phyllis?
Well, as I say, I keep on looking at Exhibit A. And, you know, that's the Christmas Tree Hill Design Guidelines. And under each building form, it says, "Large and broken expanses of all should be avoided. All buildings should have shadow relief created by modest overhangs, minor projections." Roof forms talks about gable, hip, and shed roof forms at low to moderate pitch blend with hillside slopes. Flat roofs are discouraged, except in a small, non-visible area. The largest area of roof should be similar in direction to the natural slope. I mean, this does not fit those guidelines. I like this house, but I am wondering what we are opening up.
Right.
Because by not following those guidelines or not adhering to it somewhat is a concern of mine. And I also, as I said, because of the mass, I would like to see the height lowered. As I say, the 12-foot foyer is, to me, maybe attractive, but it's not necessary. Ceiling heights could be lowered. I think it, there was an 11-foot ceiling on one of the levels. And then, and then there's a 10-foot, is that the lowest level?
Actually, the top level is 10-foot as well.
It says 12 in the plan.
So, here you can see a 10-foot ceiling.
Okay.
Right here, this ceiling is 11-foot.
Okay, and then the bottom?
And this ceiling is 10-foot. And can I add a comment?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, so, part of that is driven by not trying to dig the house down into the hill further. You know, we were trying to achieve a level up here for the driving apron. And then, this, you see this dashed line right here? This represents existing grade, so.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, well, I guess I take that back. So, if we reduce ceiling heights, these come up. So, it doesn't get shorter as much as, I guess it gets squatter, but the building won't get shorter, if that makes sense.
I talk about length of the building. That would be, to me, shorter would be length. I'm talking about height. And I am saying at grade level where the garage is, it's the garage, but the entranceway, you say it's a 10-foot ceiling. I'd lower that. you say it's a ten-foot ceiling, I'd lower that. Make the middle story ten and leave the bottom, the bottom ten, or even nine. You don't have to clean those high ceilings, you wouldn't love them so much. I'm just saying that it might help the mass, the, the percept, it's the perception rather than the reality. It's how, when you look at it. And I'm just thinking that it might work better with other houses there, because, believe me, once the next person wants to build somewhere on Christmas Tree Hill, they're going to go up there and say, "See what he did?" It, it sets a precedence, and yet by lowering it a little bit, it's not going to take away from the beauty of the design. And as I say, it's not making it not as long, that, you know, the size of the rooms are not oversized, they're nice-sized, but it's just a matter, the height adding to that look of mass, I think, can be adjusted somewhat. And I may be alone in that, I just, I'm trying to find a way that is satisfactory to everybody, including the person who has to live in the house.
Okay.
You will see other houses that are three stories straight up and down.
Oh, I know.
You know? Yeah.
We hear about them, believe me.
Well, I think the lot is a really difficult sort of hardship lot to work with, and you've created a unique house that, you know, if it was in a more visible location, I would have some of Phyllis's concerns about the massing on that. But, you know, the, the flat roofs that are not visible to anybody, and the, the massing, which is really, you know, not visible, One Fifty-One is the only residence, and it doesn't actually have windows looking out that direction. So, so I think the, the lot would justify the variances requested, and that we're making special circumstances because of the difficulty of building on this lot and getting that in. I think the only thing that I would maybe like to see in the, the final design is to, you know, thinking about this idea of water storage that you had, or gray water system, which would be ideal, you know, on a downsloping lot like that. So, I, I think you've been very, very creative in, in designing a house that looks very livable, but doesn't really impact the neighbors.
All right. Ms. Bandell?
I think, I applaud you for even trying to build anything on this lot. I think it's, as I said, having been up there, I think it's a miracle people do that every day. I think that, that there would, could be ways for you to soften some of the edges and make it more cottage-like without, without changing the step-down idea, which I like a lot. I, maybe they have ways to, maybe it can be done with landscaping to make it look more cottage-like. Maybe it can be done with, I don't know, a tilt of some of the angles. Maybe it could be done with fire-resistant shingles at some part of it. I think there are ways that it, it could be, it, it, I think that there are ways it could be made so that it's not criticized in the future as being not consistent with Christmas Tree Hill, since those rules are there, and you just have to live with them. And I understand there are other modern-looking structures there, but I do think this would set a precedent of very hard edges and not cottage at all. It just isn't a modern cottage or anything else. I think the size, I have a little bit of a problem with the variance on, on the lot coverage and the size, but I think because it's so far off the beaten track, I think that could be worked around. I particularly, in the next go-round, like to see some landscape plans, because I think that they're absolutely necessary for drainage issues and holding the hillside and, and your neighbors around you and privacy. That's it.
All right.
And I think the parking, putting in extra parking is to be applauded.
Peter?
Yes, just a second. All right. Okay, great.
Yeah.
All right. Phyllis?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the landscaping would soften the lines, Margaret. I don't think, I wouldn't change the lines, because I think it would ruin the design. I mean, as far as the straight lines, et cetera, I think landscaping around it would soften the effect that you're looking for, you know, give you the effect you're looking for.
Yeah, so I think it goes without saying, they'll produce a landscape plan when it comes back. The, the challenge is up on this hillside is how to create landscape materials that are not problematic for fire.
Like bamboo, I'm sorry.
So whether it's ECM or other things, I don't know what you put into it, but we'll leave that to you to work with your architecture. It, it sounds as if Christmas Tree Hill Dwellers Association is undergoing some changes, but nonetheless, these Christmas Tree Hill Design Guidelines are in place, even though they're back from nineteen-ninety-four, I think it was, yeah.
But it's an ordinance.
So, it is hard, but not impossible, to take those guidelines and apply them to this, but it requires us to stretch our imagination a bit, to call it articulated design in the sense that they thought of articulated design when they wrote this stuff. I think we're entering a period where we have to consider new ways of defining some of these things because of so much contemporary architecture. So building articulation has to be thought of differently. And I don't know quite how we're going to get to that, but we're going to have to start figuring out what that means in the, the context of these contemporary designs. That said, I think you've got articulation there, but it's kind of a stretch for the average person to say, "That's articulation," right? But you've created these surfaces that move in and out from each other and various height differentiations. And I think that works, but it's, if the Christmas Tree Hill Dwellers Association commented on it, I think they might say, "What are they talking about? It's not there in the form that they think of it and that they had in their minds." But I think you've done a certain amount of it, and if you get much more articulation, it's going to clutter it. But your design is very efficient. I think it's well-thought, and it's, and it's, it's pretty. Building it is another story, and that's a problem you're going to have to figure out as you submit building plans. But that's, I would support it. I would support the variances that you're asking for because of its location. And I think there's a certain elegance to the design. I would not want to encourage any further growth of this design. And I would stand behind Phyllis's comment to say, yeah, if you can find a way to economize, so it would be encouraged. But I look at the floor plan, and I don't think there's much economy to be had in the floor plan.
No, I was just talking about lowering the ceilings, not changing the size of the rooms or the size of the building itself.
So, that said, I, I, where it is, you're within the heights, and you're paralleling the grades, you are asking for everything that, and the lot can be used for and more. So you're asking for variances, and you've got it right up to the height, you've got it right to the, all of these things. Normally, we say, you can't have all of it and ask for some of it. So that's what we're essentially talking about here, is that when it comes back, it's, there may be commentary from other unimpacted parties to say, "How can you grant this, these variances, and give them all of this with, at the limit of the allowances for the property?" So that's just something, because we don't normally say, "You get it all and then some." So here we are, looking at the variances, and, and I would say, if the bulk can be reduced in conjunction with what Phyllis says, that would be encouraged somehow to ratchet it down a little bit. I understand your comment about you start lowering those heights, and the house compacts up the hill, so to speak, so it, and it loses some of it, its elegance. But that's, that's a problem for us as a commission to say, "You get all of those things." So. Anything else? Bud?
Yeah, we've commented about the landscaping. And on a fifty-degree slope, the landscaping is going to be determined by the fire marshal. You know, I, I, I think the landscape architect is going to be minimally involved or just adhering to working with the fire marshal to determine, you know, what stays and what goes.
The one thing that is, not talked about as much are the green things that we'd like to incorporate. If you can get into gray water, that's part of the town ordinance now, but the greater the gray water effort you make is important. There's no solar going on this roof, even though I've seen some solar products coming out lately that are highly efficient, even on the flat. But when is it going to be required?
Two thousand twenty, sorry.
Yeah, two thousand twenty.
Twenty, two twenty.
What about wooded sites? Are they required? Yeah, I don't know what the exception is. Yeah.
It's coming down the pike.
Is there any solar incorporated?
That's what I was just asking, it's not.
Not.
So.
The state is, they make the rule, and then we have to figure out how to meet it.
Okay. So, without any other elements to be added from the other commissioners, you've heard about bulk, you've heard about concerns about it. It'll be a real application, it's got to be very well justified for all of those elements when it comes back before us. You'll add all these necessary landscaping, exterior lighting, all of that. This house with all this glass will be, on one exposure, will be visible interior, right? We can't, we don't have anything that allows us to address that. I'm just saying, when you have fully-lit interiors, they show up down the hillside and from a lot of places through all those windows.
Maybe they could use a scrim at night, when it's lit, you know, the interior lighting? So you still have the sheerness.
Solar shades you're talking about, or something like that that would drop down?
Yeah. I always think, from the theater, when they bring down the scrims, you know.
Yeah. Okay. So with that.
I was going to say, I'm, I'm not sure that the house is going to be that visible to anybody, you know, even down the hill from there, just looking at the vegetation.
Well, it depends on what's going to take down the trees, though.
Yeah, but the trees that are coming down are, the house is going to be where the trees, in other words, the trees that are coming out are basically within the footprint of where the house is.
I understand that, but the trees block what could be seen from those big windows now.
Oh, but I wouldn't want to cover them. I, I don't like window coverings.
All right. Thank you, guys. I hope that you feel like you're encouraged to go forward with this one, keep that design, don't abandon it, drill down into it, and come back to us. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Adam, who takes care of these notebooks? Seven years' worth of stuff from.
Okay.
Some of this old stuff from years ago.
I don't have anything to report, because I don't think anybody went to the last town council meeting.
I did.
You did?
And Charles was there, but he asked me to report on the two main things that they talked about.
Rules of order that we use.
Phyllis, we want to talk, we want to get through this, if you can hold on that, please.
Okay.
And Margaret's going to report on the last town council meeting.
The, the first big topic that was talked about was the problem that people in the vicinity of Redwood High School.
Oh, yeah.
And I forget what they call that area, were having with kids parking. And so the consideration and what the town council passed was a, a one-year trial of parking permits for the people that live in that area. Many people came and talked about how difficult it is for them to just have a life with their neighborhoods parked up, and there'll be considerations for people who need to come into the neighborhood to have work done, or friends, or family, or nurses, or babysitters. But basically, the kids will not be able to park there. And they're working with, the town manager was working with the principal of Redwood High School, who also spoke. And then the second topic was, and this is where I, very apropos of this, is, and the reason I went to the council is because they talked about three different lots in Corder Madera that the fire marshal has said need to be abated. Two of them were in Christmas Tree Hill.
Hmm.
They're unoccupied, and they could not get in touch with the owners of the lots. The, the owners do not live around here, and they couldn't get in touch with the owners, and they're at, you know, basically, I guess what they're going to do is come in, abate the lots, because they're a fire danger now, and there've been complaints about them, and continue to try to get in touch with the owners, or finally put a lien on the property.
Wouldn't they have to have an address up at the county before the tax bill goes to?
They've got no response.
We have the addresses.
The, the address was there, but they've gotten, they've tried many different ways to contact the owner, and they've gotten no response. The third reason was why I was there, because it's the home next to mine that is owner-occupied, but by a person I haven't seen in thirty years. And it has never been abated before, or complained about before, because the son was in some way connected with one of the fire departments in Marin County. I've never complained about it, because I have thought it would be useless to complain about it, but it does need to be abated, and the person who lives there is kind of reclusive, a, a woman, and her son, who was part of the fire department, said he can't handle it anymore, go in and abate it. And they're trying to move that woman into a facility where she can be cared for. So that was interesting because of these unoccupied lots, which, when they were talking about owner-occupied, I thought, "You're not going to like it if your lot needs to be abated someday." But anyway, I didn't know the fire department did it, but I think because there's such a danger now, fire danger, that the town is going to start enforcing things like that. And that was basically the meeting.
Very good. Okay. Good to know about that. Adam, do you have anything you want to contribute?
No, nothing tonight.
You want to go home?
Shall we just approve the minutes?
Yes, so we have two sets of meeting notes. We have to move to approve each one individually.
We could do them together if nobody has any changes.
Unless, so, July ninth, I'm going to ask if there are any changes to that meeting, set of meeting notes?
No.
Okay. July twenty-third, are there any requested changes?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
One change, I think, page three, they referenced the Audi dealership, and it's really Jeep Chrysler dealership on the top of the page.
Oh, yes.
I think somebody misspoke and then got corrected, but the minutes didn't reflect that. And with that correction, I move to approve both.
All right. Can we do voice vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Are we saving all this ADU stuff?
Are we saving what?
Saving, you can save it however you like.
No, I mean, when it comes back again, will we get it back again? Yeah, okay.
Sometimes we actually just, rather than print it all out again, we'll refer to the website link just to save the paper. Okay. Yeah, it's definitely all on the website, and we have a specific ADU page for all of this that, you know, we're trying to put all the information on there, so. all the information on there. So, can you, sorry, I, I'm trying to get the correction for the minutes. Bob, can you just point me to the right?
I just closed it. It was page three at the very top.
Yeah. The top, on, on the twenty-third, it says Chair Chase and Mr. Price discuss parking on San Clemente, et cetera.
Understanding with the Audi dealership that relates to, I think it was actually with the, with the, was it, it was the Acura dealership, right?
No, it's, it's the Jeep, Jeep dealership, which is right next door. Chrysler Jeep dealership is the immediate dealership.
So, this was a discussion about San Clemente.
San Clemente.
Drive, and there was another dealership.
And it is the Acura.
The Acura, okay.
And not Audi.
And it's a storage lot that they were talking about.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Side lot. And I said something about that, the overhead lights, which can be adjusted.
Right. That was the minute, yeah.
Instead of going down, they have them out like this, and they've been asked to do something. They haven't.
So, just to clarify, we should call it the Acura dealership?
Acura, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Move adjournment?
Move to adjourn? Okay. Yes, meeting is adjourned.